All right, I'll call the General Committee meeting to order. Welcome to General Committee of Berry City Council. It is a virtual meeting due, of course, to the COVID pandemic and the distancing measures. Council General Committee is practicing physical distancing and all members of council and the executive management team are participating via video conference tonight. I'm at City Hall and the clerk is here as well on the call if we have any questions. And of course, staff members who have staff reports on the agenda tonight are also available to answer questions. So we will, as always, run through the consent agenda first. I'll read out the title associated with the staff reports and the recommended motions. Members of council, please ask if the item, if you want to debate the item to hold it. If the item is not held, then the motion is deemed to be approved on consent and it will go forward to city council at our next meeting next Monday. There will be no further discussion tonight. We do have one presentation which will do immediately following the consent agenda, but before we consider the items that have been held. Okay, so tonight, reports of reference advisory or special committees. We have the report of the Finance and Corporate Services Committee dated October 6th. That is to be received. Finance and Corporate Services has recommended the following motions. First, with regards to a sole source agreement with Cornerstone Recovery for clothing bins locations.
Hold please.
Okay, that's held by Counselor Natalie Harris. The next item is Cornerstone to Recovery Women's Addiction Recovery Facility. This is the funding motion. No holds on that. That is approved. The next item is the memo from our clerk Wendy Cook, Director of Legislative and Court Services dated March 9th. And that is the item that was deferred to the next meeting. So no decision there, just a deferral cake, no holds on the motion to defer it. We have the draft Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan. No holds, that is approved. Staff reports. The first staff report today is with regards to the sandbox and their capital funding request.
Hold please.
Held by Counselor McCann. Next item is a confidential potential land disposition matter, Vesper and Victoria Streets.
Hold please.
Held by Counsel Ripmott. The staff report regarding free transit for Berry High School students. No holds, that is approved, that's to receive the report. And then the winner of the longest motion ever, the 2020 parking strategy.
Hold.
Held by Counselor Ward. Didn't think that was going to go without some discussion. Okay, we will first be hearing about that very same parking strategy. We have a presentation about it and the presentation is by Tessa Williams, who is Business Service Analyst in the Transit and Parking Strategy Department. And Tessa, are you on the Zoom yet? Yes, just coming in now. And I wanted to check that because I'm going to embarrass you right off the hop by recognizing you for just getting your registered professional planner designation. Congratulations on the RPP, virtual applause council. That is, it is a major accomplishment. It's a combination for those who aren't aware of the designation. It's actually a combination of an exam, work experience and education. And it is not easy to get like all professional designations, so congratulations. Tess is going to be, Ms. Williams is going to be giving the presentation regarding the 2020 parking strategy and I will hand it over to you at this point.
Thank you, Mary Leland. I'll just go ahead and share my screen. Okay, so I promise this will not be the longest presentation ever, unlike our motion. So thank you, Mary Lehman, members of council and members of the public that are listening from home. As you know now, my name is Tessa Williams and I had the great experience of leading the parking strategy. So over a year ago, I started this project with a team that included consultants from IBI Group and also my colleagues in traffic enforcement, planning and economic development. So we set out to create a plan that would address some of the issues that we face today with parking, but also to start to plan for the future and address the emerging issues that will come as our city grows. So I'll start by giving you an overview of our approach to the project and the key findings. And then I'll delve into recommendations by the area of impact, including the downtown waterfront technology and financials. So when we talk about parking, I like to remind us of what its core function is. And that's to provide access to opportunity. That includes a wide range of activities from enjoying the recreation facilities on the waterfront to supporting the downtown business community as an entrepreneur, as a customer and an employee. So as a result, we have a wide range of stakeholders that we need to take into account when we're making decisions about parking. We created these guiding principles to remind us of the stakeholders that we serve and the different goals that we confer there as a parking team. So the first guiding principle is financial sustainability. And this is to recognize that parking is a user pay service that is meant to be self sustaining. The next guiding principle is downtown enrichment. And this recognizes that parking plays an important role in making the downtown appealing to businesses, visitors and residents alike. The next guiding principle is transportation diversification. And this acknowledges the role that the availability and pricing of parking plays in driving travel choice and travel behavior. So it can be used as a tool to further the goals of our transportation master plan. At the heart of everything we do is the continuous improvement guiding principle. And this is really to just remind us that we're trying to shift towards a more proactive and strategic approach to decision making. So to create the parking strategy, we reviewed utilization data to identify trends. We completed a peer review and analyzed new technology and best practices that could be applied here in Berry. But most importantly, we spent a lot of time engaging with the public and our key stakeholders. So folks involved with the downtown BIA, RVH, the Marina, the library and tourism Berry. So the insights and the concerns that they were able to share with us helped us prioritize issues that were important to the community, but also tailor our recommendations to local context. The key findings for the downtown included the barrier of inconvenience. So what we heard from stakeholders is that inconvenience, it's inconvenient to find parking and it's hard to pay for parking. And this is actually a bigger barrier than the cost of parking itself. We also learned that although our parking system in the downtown is only 50% full at peak, there are pockets where there is higher demand and this creates perception that there's no parking available. We also did parking projections that took into account population growth, changes in travel behavior, changes to our municipal parking supply and infill redevelopment. And so what we found is that in the year 2041, the downtown parking system will reach effective capacity. Some opportunities we see for the downtown parking system are technology. It has the potential to solve multiple problems we face, including offering cashless payment methods and offering enhanced wayfinding to help people find nearby parking. We also learned that our municipal control of the parking supply is a bigger asset than perhaps we previously valued it as. Controlling the parking supply allows us to drive behavior through price. So we can price our slow lots cheaper than our busy lots and influence the choices that people make in this way. It also allows us to retain key supply in areas where we're going to need it in the future if we decide to go ahead and redevelop lots. So when it comes to the waterfront parking, we were aware and the study confirmed that we do have an issue in the summertime. There's a real seasonal spike in demand and this can create a perception that the issue is bad all year round, but what we found is that it is limited to summer weekends. We also did complete future parking demand projections to ensure that this issue is going to remain seasonal and it's going to remain limited to weekends. And for that reason, we don't think that it's a good use of public funds at this time to expand parking supply in the waterfront. It will come at a high capital cost and ongoing operating costs and it will sacrifice green space on the waterfront that is really valuable. So it will not be the best use because again, it won't be needed nine months of the year. It's really will maybe needed in the summer. So what we're going to focus on is strategies to shift demand and reduce demand before we decide to go ahead and consider building additional parking facilities. Another key finding from the waterfront is that spillover parking is a real threat to our established residential neighborhoods where there is comparatively less parking opportunities. And this is a difficult issue to address without impacting the rights of residents who want to enjoy their properties and host guests from out of town. But we did also find some exciting opportunities on the waterfront. The go station in our Berry Bus Terminal, they're located at great strategic places near waterfront in the downtown. But there may be opportunities for us to encourage people to leave their cars at home and use alternative modes. Also, in the near term, we see that the downtown will have capacity. So if we can shift some of the waterfront demand to the downtown and really improve multimodal connections between the downtown and waterfront. And that way, it may be become possible for people to leave their car in the downtown and then walk or cycle and take transit to access the waterfront. So when we look ahead to the future, I think one of the biggest takeaways from this project is that our status quo approach is not enough. It won't solve the issues that we're facing. We're going to need to be more creative when we consider solutions for the future. So that means looking to shift demand and manage demand before we jump to building our way out of congestion and trying to build more capacity. But it also means embracing new technology to improve our user experience and to improve the enforcement process. So that could include efficiencies through technology and also, you know, making the systems of inspection less susceptible to dispute. So I'm going to start with the improvements we're recommending for the downtown. Our first recommendation is to adopt a parking equilibrium policy. This is will be coming through the new official plan process. And what it will create is a negotiation tool to allow us to get public parking supply replaced onsite or nearby if we choose to use redevelopment as a strategy for positive revitalization in the downtown. We're recommending changes to our pricing structure to optimize the parking behavior. So essentially what we'll be doing is reassigning a higher price to the busiest lots and pricing the slowest lots cheaper. So this will create a price incentive to drive traffic to underutilized facilities such as the Collier Street Parkade. We're also recommending some changes to the library lot to address concerns from our stakeholders. So we'll be removing monthly pass access and we'll be recommending a three hour timeline. The intent is to really drive turnover of parking spaces and to increase availability for parking patrons. To ensure we have a consistent parking system, we're recommending that the time limit at City Hall be adjusted to three hours to match the library lot and just kind of create that same level of service where it's meant to be high turnover so that our customers can access services. We're recommending that we withdraw pass access to on-street parking locations on Collier Points, Parkside Drive in Toronto. There are areas where you can use a parking pass and park all day. And typically, parking guiding principles say that on-street spaces are the most convenient and therefore they should turn over the most. So that's why we're making these changes again to improve access for customers. So that next time you try to go to the bank, there may be a space available. Whereas right now, somebody could park all day in front of the bank and take that space away from a customer. Lastly, we're recommending implementing spillover controls in the periphery of the downtown. So right now, there are already many streets that have time limits between two to three hours during the workday and the work week. What we did is we just identified gaps so that we can make sure there's no gaps for people to try to avoid paying for parking and also, you know, prevent that spillover that creeps into residential neighborhoods. Moving on to the waterfront, we're recommending a pilot project that runs a shuttle service that connects the downtown to the waterfront. So the service will be finalized closer to launch the exact routing and frequency. But the intent here is to shift parking demand away from the waterfront by connecting Centennial Beach to the downtown lots that are, that have capacity on the weekends. And we're hoping this will have positive trickle down effects to the downtown business community. We're recommending controlling parking near waterfront access points. So this will mean on-street parking controls that will limit on-street parking during the summer season to vehicles that are displaying a valid resident waterfront parking pass. To guide the implementation of where these controls should go, we're recommending a policy for endorsement by council. And the intent here is to ensure that the approach is flexible and localized because we recognize that spillover doesn't affect all neighborhoods the same way. So it will give us staff the discretion to extend or reduce the 500 meters that we've been using as our starting point. And that way, we can work with the work counselor to get approval and ensure we're implementing these controls in the places they're really needed. Fourth, we are recommending removing downtown pass access from waterfront parking lots. And this is really just meant to keep the system separate and reduce confusion about the whole downtown waterfront binary that we are using. Next, we're recommending to allow vehicles without trailers to park at boat launches during the winter. This was in response to requests from winter recreationists who like to ice fish. Next, we're recommending permanently expanding the Marina Pass eligibility. This change was made in the emergency order and it's intended to make more parking spaces available close to the slips where voters want the most. Next, we're recommending contributing to a wayfinding master plan. We envision this as a corporate initiative and we see it as an opportunity to promote awareness of the parking opportunities, but also to reduce confusion. And again, look at rebranding the whole downtown waterfront system we're using right now. And maybe there's a better and more intuitive way that we could do this. Next, as per council direction, we're recommending we continue into the investigation of a Simcoe County parking pass. And that's meant to recognize, you know, the contributions of the many neighboring communities near Berry. Last, we're recommending adjusting the hybrid lot structure. So these hybrid lots are near the Spirit Catcher and they're on the waterfront, but they're also close walking distance to the downtown. So we've tried many different combinations of rules over the years. And what we're recommending is waterfront rates and waterfront hours of operations, but no eligibility under the resident pass. And this is really meant to balance the rules and ensure there's no incentive for rate invasion. So next, our technology recommendations build on each other in order to truly modernize our business processes. First, we're recommending upgrading all of our payment hardware to smart meters at the end of their service life. And this is really an ongoing practice that we're simply formalizing through the parking strategy. Secondly, we're recommending procuring a third-party parking app and that work is already underway. And that will enable us to offer a cashless convenient payment method. And you can have wayfinding capabilities at the tips of your fingers. Third, we're recommending leveraging license plate recognition technology. This is also known as LPR for short. And it's essentially a camera that it can be mounted to a vehicle and quickly scan license plates and run them against a database that has parking permissions listed by license plate. So it's already successfully used by many colleges and municipalities. And we see it being as a way to increase efficiency enforcement so that they can patrol a larger geographic area, but also complete more frequent checks. If we find that the license plate recognition technology is successful and we're realizing the efficiencies, we hope, we think there's a possibility to transition away from physical hang tags completely and go to digital parking passes. So this is an exciting prospect. There's a lot of convenience for the customer compared to the hang tag. You know, they'll now be able to purchase a parking pass from the comfort of their own home. And that's huge, especially in these COVID times. So we want to make this change as soon as possible, but it really hinges upon the successful deployment of license plate recognition technology. Last but not least, we have a suite of financial recommendations that were designed to get the parking reserve to a neutral position. So the parking reserve is a user rate, meaning that the fees are meant to cover the costs of operating the system. And there's not supposed to be any subsidy from the property taxes. We did a peer review and we found that this is the most typical model that municipalities use to fund their parking systems. And we think that it's really the most fair system because it only impacts the people who use the system. So because the parking reserve has been in a deficit for a number of years, we had to sit down with our consultants and identify some financial interventions so that we can make all the positive changes that we want to make and fund them in a responsible way. So the key takeaway from this graph is that the rate increases alone were not enough to lift the parking reserve out of a deficit. And that you can see from scenario five, which is represented by the yellow trend line. We're recommending we proceed with scenario two, which is represented the green line and shows the parking reserve trending towards a neutral position in the year 2030. So what does scenario two mean? It means a few different changes. The first was an increase to waterfront rates and fines, and this was already approved by council over the summer. The second change is an increase to downtown rates. So we haven't had a rate increase since 2014. And this change will bring us in line with our peer municipalities and also the rate of inflation. We've delayed the timing of the implementation of the rate increases for the hourly and daily rates, which are typically used by customers until Q4 2021. This is will be a year since our beautiful Dunlop Streetscape project that's completed. The next change is an increase to hospital rates and hours and operations. So we have some on-street parking available near RVH and it's very popular because it's a discounted rate. We're recommending we go to $5 an hour, which will still be a discount compared to the RBA rate, which is 650 an hour in their lots. Lastly, we're recommending introducing evening paid parking in the downtown. We know this is a big change, but it was the change that was viewed as preferable from the downtown business community who we engage directly through survey and through in-person meeting meetings. The reason why this change is preferred is because it's viewed as being equitable. It impacts both our daytime businesses whose customers already pay for parking today. And now the evening customers, such as restaurants and bars, their customers will also have to pay for parking. Again, we delayed the implementation of this change to Q2 2022 because we want to give the downtown business community time to recover from all the changes they've experienced over the last few months with COVID-19. So I've just given you a lot of information about all the changes we want to make. So I want to remind you kind of what we're envisioning, what we're trying to achieve. And that's a parking system that leverages technology to make it easy to pay and find for parking. It's a system that is simple and stress-free to navigate for customers. And it's a system that's sustainable so that we can continue to improve and invest in the public realm. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much. And I'd be happy to take any questions on the presentation at this time.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Williams, for the presentation. Just going to get my grid back. There we are. Members of General Committee, do you have any questions for Ms. Williams about the parking strategy? Counselor Aon.
Thank you, Mary Lehman, and thank you, Tessa, for the presentation. And thank you so much for your work on this. This is a huge undertaking, but there's some really exciting and interesting stuff. Interesting, I never thought I'd say that parking strategy was interesting, but here we are. So my question is around the different scenarios that you had on slide 12, I believe it was, with the graphs. I'm wondering what the reasoning was for not going with scenario four, which was rate increases and waterfront paid parking. It's my understanding that the consultant recommended this scenario, but I'm interested in hearing why scenario two was picked instead.
Ms. Williams.
Certainly through you, Mary Lehman, to Counselor Aon. We ultimately based that decision off of feedback. So we did a lot of engagements with the residents. We had a highly participated in survey and we actually put that question out to the public. Would you continue to use the waterfront if you had to pay for parking? And the results showed pretty strongly that this was not a change, the public was in favor of this time, at this time. And for that reason, we decided to pursue an alternative scenario that would be more publicly supportive.
That's great, thank you. And certainly with the evening parking, I'm hearing the same thing from the downtown business community that it is an issue of equity. You know, with the daytime businesses always having paid parking and the nighttime business is not. So I'm excited by that change. Thanks for your answer.
Thanks, Counselor O and Counselor Harris. Sorry, that was Counselor Jim Harris.
Thank you. Can you hear me fine? Okay, thank you. Ms. Williams, thank you for a great presentation and thank you to Mr. Forsyth and the team for allowing us to have a pre-consultation to see some of this because there's so much involved in the parking and we went through so much in the summertime. So having that opportunity was really appreciated. Have one question and Mr. Forsyth might be not surprised, I'm going to ask about the license plate recognition, which I think is a really interesting opportunity. And I think one of the things that we see a lot is in relation to developments is the fear, concern about the potential future parking problems that might happen because of increased volumes and cars and neighborhoods. I know, for example, recently I was appreciated having a parking inconvenience bylaw suspended related to the Allendale waterfront go station because the parking place restriction was put in place to prevent go riders from parking all day in front of homes in the area. So obviously with go, not really that busy now. We've suspended that restrictions, it really was, at this point was inconveniencing the residents. So my question would be, is there application for the license plate recognition to be able to manage parking restrictions such that the resident might have a certain ability to park in front of, say, their home, whereas a non-resident not designated through the software would not be able to? Does that possibility exist?
Ms. Williams.
Thank, yeah.
Thank you through you, Mary Lehman, to Counselor Harris. Yes, that possibly exists. We know that there are other municipalities who administer parking programs that are based on certain neighborhoods or perhaps residency in a certain municipality. And they do use the license plate recognition technology to administer those programs.
Thank you. In the new parking strategy, might there be some separate, I guess, once we have the LPR, maybe pilots and opportunities to test what that might be able to do in and of itself as a strategy?
Through you, Mary Lehman, to Counselor Harris. Yes, certainly, when we get the license plate recognition pilot started, we have a full 12 months where we want to test the capabilities and we'll start with more basic things like time limit parking. And we can progress to more complicated things such as a resident parking pass. If we're seeing success and if we're seeing the technology is working how we expect it to. And so we'll be working very closely with our colleagues in enforcement to go through that pilot and collect that data and really understand the true capability and how it can help us solve some of the parking problems we see here in Berry.
Great. Thank you very much for the answers. It's exciting to have this new tool coming on board, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Harris. Others with questions? Anyone else have questions from Ms. Williams? Counselor McCann.
Thank you, Mary Lehman, and thanks, Tessa, for the presentation. I've got a couple of questions that you may or may not have. When you talked about the survey that people found it hard to find and hard to pay. You know, I'm just curious because it kind of relates to maybe a memo that I'm going to put on later on tonight. found it hard to find and hard to pay, um, you know, I'm just curious because it kind of relates to maybe a amendment I'm going to put on later on tonight. The test market, was that a couple hundred people? Was that a couple thousand people you asked? And was it all central downtown Barry? Did you have that information handy?
Ms. Williams.
Through you, Mary Lehman, to Counselor McCann. I don't have the, uh, survey results in front of me, but I know that we had over 500 responses and we did track postal codes. Um, so that was the, the public survey that we put out. We also did a survey that was specific to business owners and we heard from 50 businesses. And again, they, we asked them, what is the area we can improve the most? And then the, the metric from that was that more businesses answered that find, it was hard to find parking over the cost of parking. So that's where we kind of found that, that message. So it was a snapshot of, of 50 businesses.
Well, I appreciate that. And, and I know I'm kind of throwing a, uh, a, a pretty detailed question. So if you don't have, you know, a detailed answer for me, I appreciate that. But I guess the test market, you would say then, was it pretty dynamic throughout the whole city? Wasn't just isolated to the downtown then, right? Then the postal codes were all across Barry.
Through, through you, Mary Lehman, to Counselor McCann. Yes, the, the, the results from the general public seemed pretty diverse. And then the second survey, the business owner survey, we heard from businesses of all different types. We did measure that. So it was retail service. Um, we did hear from a mix.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you. A couple of other questions. It kind of made me go on this, uh, license plate, uh, recognition. Uh, you know, the cost of, of waiting and the cost of doing it now, have you analyzed at all what that cost would be if we were to maybe invest in that technology sooner than later to help pay down our debt? Is that something that you, you and your team have, uh, discussed?
Uh, through you, Mary Lee, into Counselor Ken. So we, we are actually in, already in the process of securing a vendor for a license plate recognition pilot. So, so that work is actually already underway and we're, we're very close. Um, we're just dealing with some insurance issues, which is frustrating because we're eager to start, but it's an important piece to get right and it's limit risk. And so that work is actually underway. We're, we're going to test that technology as soon as possible without delay and then report back a year, once we have a year's worth of data, um, to decide if this is something we should invest in further.
Okay. And then the, the credit card payment plan, uh, is that coming, uh, in the near future as well?
Uh, through you, Mary Lee, into Counselor McCann. I, I believe you mean the parking app. Is, is that correct?
Yeah, the, to your credit card. Yeah.
Yeah. So the, the parking app, um, is exciting. We actually have a kickoff meeting scheduled this week to start planning the steps necessary to do a soft launch. Um, most municipalities we've seen do a soft launch. So that basically means rolling out the app in select locations to make sure that there's no unforeseen technical issues. And that way we're providing a higher level of service so that we're getting it right and avoiding any frustration. So, um, the parking app again, almost the same answer, you know, we're going to be testing that technology as soon as possible without delay.
Well, last question I have, you said that, you know, you have to get kind of creative at these times. And, uh, I didn't know, you mean, are these parking passes technology integratable to, uh, any other municipalities? Or that it'll be isolated only to the city of Barry?
Uh, through you, Mary Lehman, to Counselor McCann. I think that's a question I'd have to do more research once I actually had the technology in place. And, and it would involve speaking with our, our peers and colleagues in other municipalities. So I don't think I could answer that question at this time.
Fantastic. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor McCann. Counselor Thompson.
Thanks through you, Mary Lehman. Uh, great presentation, Tessa, and, uh, the same as, uh, Counselor Harris said. I was on the, uh, pre-meeting, I guess, and, uh, it was actually a very enjoyable process that gave us some time and it, it was, was very informative. Um, one question I have, was there any consideration of the rate of the hospital parking? I've had a few calls from some residents that, you know, need to go for treatment, like, and now they feel that it's, you know, price gouging and I understand. So I did a little bit of research. I know that the staff can opt out of their parking, which if our rates don't compete, then we're going to have all staff parking. Was there any possible consideration of like using a residence pass to reduce the rate for people going to treatment that belong to Barry? As it is a regional center, we're taking care of our residents.
Ms. Williams.
Through you, Mary Lehman, to Counselor Thompson. So we definitely were cognizant of the fact that this can be a more vulnerable population, uh, people who are accessing the hospital for treatment. And that's why we wanted to ensure we are continuing to offer a discounted rate compared to the, um, parking lot at RVH itself. Um, and that was the, the decision there. We did not, uh, consider offering basically, uh, an exemption or a discount based on your residents. That's not something we investigated as part of this parking strategy.
Yes, uh, thank you for that. I, I just think, you know, through you, Mary Lehman, again, um, yeah, I, I think of the rates downtown that we've talked and people are concerned about, you know, increasing at 75 cents to go out for dinner. You know, we're in the, the midst of a pandemic and people have to go to the hospital for, you know, reasons they don't want to, and it's not normally an enjoyable visit. I just was, you know, I, I'm a little bit alarmed that the rate increased there. Um, I'll, I'll leave that with the team and stuff and you can offline or send me an email. I seen Brent wanted to jump in. But we have till next week and if you want to send me some more information based on that, the only last thing, um, are staff still reviewing all requests from developers and businesses for long-term leasing of our parking spaces as a revenue generator to try to neutralize our deficits?
Uh, through you, Mary Lehman, to Counselor Thompson. Um, sorry. That is something that our consultant recommended against ultimately. Um, just because now that we know with our future parking demand projections that we are going to need our parking, uh, in the year 2041. It, it did not seem wise to enter into long-term leases for that reason. Uh, I'd like to invite my executive director, Rebecca James Reed, to speak to this as well, uh, if she'd like to add anything.
Ms. Reed.
Thank you, um, Tessa, and through your Mary Lehman to Counselor Thompson. Staff currently do, um, review requests that come to our attention and, um, and we would continue and we would anticipate continuing to do that in consultation with other departments. And then we would bring forward to council any recommendations, but we would, as Tessa said, we would be using this parking strategy as our guiding document to making those recommendations to council.
Okay. Uh, thanks, Counselor Thompson. Uh, Counselor Morales.
Uh, thank you, Mary Lehman. Um, I had a question about the presentation we saw. I, I don't know if I missed it, but I saw nothing in regards to sponsorship and marketing of our parking spaces. And what I mean by that is I said it back in 2016, 17, when it came up. Um, there's so many opportunities, um, to rent the space, um, that the actual parking, they're not meters anymore, but where you go get a piece of paper, if we even have them in the future, there's spaces to maybe do some wrapping along walls. And there's a, a bit of parking that we have in the parcade. Uh, we see this in the GTA. It works. It brings money. We passed a sponsor. I remember the answer getting, uh, at that time was, oh, don't worry, we're going to take a look at our, we're going to develop a sponsorship, uh, um, strategy. And that's going to be, uh, we're going to see how we can do this. Do you see any opportunity to incorporate, uh, marketing or at least go to market and see if there's interest within this? So we can get that, uh, line going up?
Through you, Mary Lee, into Counselor Morales. I mean, certainly we want to consider all options that could help, uh, the position of the parking reserve. This is not, uh, the sponsorship opportunity was not something that our consulting team highlighted as, as being perhaps the right return on investment. However, we can certainly, uh, if this is something that council is interested in us looking into further, I, I think it's something that we could do with the assistance of our capable team and communications as well as economic and creative development.
Okay, um, I'll, 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 uh, send it over to Ms. James Reed. Ms. James Reed, why, three years later, why wasn't this even explored?
Ms. James Reed.
Um, thank you through you, Mary Lee, into Counselor Morales. Um, this, the, my recollection of the previous parking strategy was that it was a commitment by the BIA to explore partnership and sponsorship. Um, as you know, our sponsorship, um, portfolio has, um, moved a little bit from department to department. It's certainly, um, something that we would consider as we move forward. However, we're not sure that the timing is ideal right now post-COVID. Um, with the whole entire sponsorship landscape, um, but we would certainly add this to the list of assets that the sponsorship coordinator is exploring.
Yeah, this is, this is, again, this is something I brought up three years ago and I, at least I want to know what it's going to look like. And I definitely would like to see it incorporated, uh, considering we do have sponsorship policy to guide that. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Morales. Uh, Deputy Mayor Ward.
Uh, thank you, Mary Lehman, and thank you very much for the presentation, Ms. Williams. I just had one question. That was about the, um, you referenced the peer review or the, uh, whatever other municipalities are doing. I know it was part of the IBI report. And I still, I, I think on our earlier meeting, when this was presented, I still don't understand how the other municipalities are able to pay for their parking. It's self-sufficient. Um, and it's a really unfortunate that a lot of municipalities didn't respond to it, but the ones that did, places like, uh, Kingston and, um, Gulf and Kitchener, I'll leave Toronto out because they're not really comparable, but they've all managed to be self-sufficient. Or at least working towards self-sufficiency without, with basically the same rates that Barry has. I mean, they have that much more vibrant downtown that they're able to generate more revenue. Or do they not include their capital costs? And just trying to figure out why other municipalities are so successful at being self-sufficient when Barry isn't.
Ms. Williams.
Through you, Mary Lehman, to Counselor Ward. It's a great question. I mean, parking is, as our consulting team said, and I like their saying, it's a very dynamic ecosystem. So it's not always possible to compare a municipality to a municipality. As you noted, um, definitely the destinations within the downtown can drive traffic. I know that we have spoken about Kingston in the past. They have a hospital and a university located near their paid parking. Whereas ours is located more in the fringe and that certainly makes a difference in, in the, um, in the market you have, uh, for paid parking. So certainly I would point to, uh, locational differences, but then there are also different strategies in place. For example, we know that Kitchener, who did respond to our peer review survey, they actually work with their economic development department to transfer funds to recognize any time parking is provided free or a discounted rate. And that kind of gets at the whole principle of a user pay system, right? There's no such thing really as free parking. Somebody is paying for it at the end of the day. So it's a big question.
Ask, explain that. I'm not quite clear what you were referencing there.
Certainly. Sorry for the confusion. Um, so essentially, if they're going to provide free hours of parking, say three hours of parking to customers in the downtown, they would estimate the demand hours that have been used and then transfer internally between the economic development department to the parking reserve. So that they're viewing that as, um, providing the free parking was an economic stimulus and the parking reserve should be kept whole so that, that free parking was provided. The call should be recognized. So there are unique strategies, um, and I could, I could certainly get into more if you like to talk about more, maybe, um, outside of the general committee meeting, but every parking system is unique. And we've come up with a plan and we feel is the best plan of action for Barry.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Ward. Uh, any other questions for Ms. Williams? Okay, seeing none, we will be talking more about parking, I guarantee it, uh, very shortly. Uh, but thank you very much for the presentations and for handling council's Q and A, uh, extremely well. Uh, thanks for all the information, Ms. Williams. And for those who, uh, have not had a chance to read the report, might be watching tonight. Uh, there is a guiding document, which was the, the work that was done by IBI, the consulting team, but the staff report is also very, very comprehensive and, uh, lays out what is a, a complicated strategy, uh, in, uh, in great detail. So thank you for the staff report as well. And to those who are on the call tonight from the team, uh, thank you all for your work. So we will, uh, members of general committee now move to the items that were held on the consent agenda. That probably makes the parking strategy, uh, second to last. We do have an in-camera item that we will do at the very end of the general committee meeting in camera. The first item that was held was from the finance and corporate services committee report, uh, and it was the only item held from that report, uh, held by Counselor Natalie Harris. And that's the, um, motion on sole source agreement with, uh, Cornerstone to Recovery. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mary Lehman. Um, so just wanted to, oh, sorry, my potter's dog. We needed to just quickly amend a couple of things on this motion. With further discussion with Cornerstone, they have, um, let staff know that they would like to continue utilizing their curbside collection opportunities. So we have to add that to the motion, um, tonight. And also, um, further review showed that, uh, we needed to use a bylaw for placement of the bins as they're not deemed as permitted under the use of the zoning bylaw that we have now that we didn't know. I guess that was a bit of a, um, just a, a slip of the mind there that we didn't have that last time. So they are amendments, I think, have been circulated to everyone. And they would be as follows. First would be to number two. Um, and so it's the staff in corporate facilities and, and we would be adding business performance and environmental sustainability departments. So that's the addition, uh, that they enter into a sole source agreement for a period of two years with an option to renew for an additional two years with Cornerstone Residential to place clothing bins at city facilities or at mutually agreed upon locations on public lands. And it would also include as well as curbside collection opportunities for the sole purpose of funding the residential recovery services. And the last part of the amendment would in- include a number three now to this. And that would state that staff in development services initiate a temporary use bylaw to allow textile bins dedicated to the Cornerstone initiative to be permitted at city facilities or public lands for a period of two years with a possible extension of two years, subject to the extension of the sole source agreement. And that's that.
Okay. So the main motion on the floor and then an amendment moved by Counselor Natalie Harris, uh, which she's just read to us. Uh, Counselor Harris, did you want to speak to that?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward. I think it's, um, a great idea. You know, staff has really been in a great, uh, contact with Cornerstone and their staff. And they, like I said, they want to express that they wanted to continue with the curbside collection as well. We had that, we had that, uh, successful pilot ran. So, um, I think that's a great idea. We're collecting more textiles and diverting it from the landfills, a great plan. And the, uh, the bylaw, uh, temporary use bylaw, um, to be honest, that I gapped on that. We, we knew that we needed that and, uh, because our staff are awesome, they caught that. And we need that because right now we don't allow for those bins to be placed on our properties. So that would allow for this.
Okay. Thanks very much for that. Um, on the amendment, members of general committee, comments or questions? Okay, um, just one small change, uh, Counselor Harris, and this is a totally a wording thing, would just clean this up. Uh, the, the name is, I believe, Cornerstone to Recovery. It's correct in the second motion. But in, in this motion, I think recovery became residential at some point and that's just a typo. So if you'll take that as a friendly, we'll just clean that up for the final motion. So it's Cornerstone to Recovery in paragraphs one and two. Okay. Um, on that, if there are no comments or questions, I'll call the vote, uh, those in favor of the amendment. Are any opposed to the amendment? None? That carries. Thank you. On the main motion. Uh, Counselor Congal. Main motion as amended, I should say. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Your Worship. So on the main motion as amended, would now be the appropriate time to request, um, consideration of an addition to the updated, um, amended, um, point two in that motion.
Absolutely. So it's a further amendment?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, would you like the language first and that I circulated that to the clerk?
Yes, please. Yeah.
Okay. And so in keeping with, um, the motion that, um, was just amended, that there's an addition on bullet two. So following the residential recovery services, I'd like to add an addition within that paragraph that states, and that staff report back to finance and corporate services committee prior to consideration of the two-year renewal with program metrics on population served, revenue generated through curbside collection and relationship to addictions and mental health service providers. And I can.
Okay. So it's amendment from Counselor Congle that, uh, we get a staff report back prior to the two year renewal. So that would be, uh, prior to the additional two years, correct, Counselor Congle?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Sure, I'm happy to answer questions. I didn't want to, um, add too many specifics because I will leave it to staff and the program to identify appropriate metrics. But I thought it would be important after two year period to make sure that information coming forward does help to make an informed decision around a couple of pieces. And one is that knowing we're seeing quite a lot of investment in, in mental health across the region, we're seeing some changes with our, um, provincial systems. It would be great to see how this new resource is integrated or connected from referral pathways. Uh, so when individuals finish the program, uh, if there's any good, uh, intelligence around other supports. And, uh, in addition to that population served. So I know it was referenced that, um, individuals are not necessarily restricted to being Berry residents. It would be great to see if there's an understanding of in the first two years, the individual served within Berry. Or Simcoe County, if the numbers are not high enough from a sensitivity. And then others and within that, whether or not there's any waiting list information. But to help identify if additional types of services would be beneficial. And, uh, after two years, uh, if revenue generated through curbside collection. Has an impact on sustainability of the program or anything we should consider around increasing number of bins or, or otherwise. But also around giving some confidence to revenue being sustainable or not. So I don't, uh, want to get into the nitty gritty of the details. I think my intention of this is that there are some metrics that should come forward as appropriate, uh, in scope and in privacy or confidentiality. Um, and so if that needs to come back as a staff report, um, that's more confidential, uh, and handled in camera. Um, if it has any impacts on the program, um, then, uh, then I would say I'd leave that to the discretion of staff.
Okay, thanks for that, Counselor Congle. Counselor Thompson.
Through you, Mayor Lehman, to the mover of the amendment on. I'm a little bit confused. They're asking for a capital, um, ask here, just to help out in light of everything. They've never asked for government money before, but they're actually a private entity. I know they're getting a sole source and that'll help them, but I think the matrix would be in two years if the building's still open. Then everything would be working well. So I, I don't know. I'll listen to other people, but I just, I, I don't understand the need to get into all that information where. Some of the marginalized people who will use this service or are already in Berry. Aren't necessarily from Berry. So we don't, we don't find out where those people are from, you know, in, in any way, shape or form. So I just, I think this is such a great thing. I just don't think we should put any barriers to it. And like I said, I'll listen and stuff right now. I'm just a little bit undecided on the amendment, but thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Thompson. Counselor Harvey.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, this is a question to the mover. I was just wondering if you've had any discussion with the, uh, the executives from, uh, Cornerstone. In regards to the, uh, the type of data that you're looking for in this amendment.
Sure. I haven't had any direct outreach. I'm hoping to actually, um, tour the facility. I know that I did attend the finance committee meeting where there was questions and Q and As about. Metrics and reporting and commentary by them about what they do and do not report. Um, I've left it vague enough to give some indication of what I'm asking for from a metric. I think it's just to make sure that in the end, if we are supporting an ongoing, so in another two year of access to bins as a revenue generating. Uh, opportunity to support the ongoing operations of the program, some metrics back. So right now, the blind spots I have are more around new, um, great opportunity to look at this from a treatment, uh, arrangement and a treatment resource. Um, wanting to see that they're effectively integrating into the program, um, within our, um, mental health and addiction system and healthcare system and RAM clinic. Uh, but more than that is that we can make an informed decision in two years to understand how dependent they are on the curbside collection. And the importance of either renewing that contract, um, but with that, then understanding how the dollars are supporting the program.
Just to follow up, if I could, Your Worship, I guess some of my concerns around. The manner in which this motion is worded is it's potentially encroaching on some very sensitive. And personal information that we may not be lawfully being able to even come in contact with. And, and Cornerstone may not be in a position to provide some of the, the data that, uh, this motion is potentially requesting. And that's why I was just kind of curious whether there was any conversation ahead of that. Cause I think that probably would have been a responsible route, uh, to ensure that, uh, what's being asked for can actually be accomplished opposed to us. Passing something and demanding, uh, a particular clause. Only to find out that they're not able to provide the type of data that's being requested. So I, uh, I'll, I'll sit back and see what other members believe, think, but I'm, uh, reluctant in, in, uh, supporting this at this present time.
Thanks, Counselor Harvey. Counselor Natalie Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Uh, yeah, maybe I can provide a bit of insight to, um, Counselor Congle. If, um, I know that I work really closely with Cornerstone to Recovery. So without the bin, um, model, the textile diversion program, it, it won't be funded. Um, but I can tell you that this is a 100% completely accredited treatment center. Um, you know, the same model that would be coming to Berry has been used for 18 years. And, um, my, my concern, I mean, in the original motion, it does, you know, say that there is only the option to renew for an additional two years with Cornerstone Residential. I would feel more comfortable. I, I, I see what you're saying. You've made it vague. I, I get your intention of making it vague. But I would rather have you have that conversation with Cornerstone to get the metrics that you're looking for. Make sure that those metrics are possible with respect to confidentiality. Um, I have no problem if they say, yeah, it's like the data and they're good with that. No, no problem at all. Um, I just, yeah, it's being that it's a little bit vague and we haven't talked to Cornerstone about it yet. Um, I'm not sure if through the week, there was a possibility of you being able to have a conversation with them and. And figure out what metrics you would like to use because it's a real, it's a very valid point as well that the people that will be using this treatment center in Berry. Maybe coming in, you know, from all different areas around the province, around the country, depending on COVID. And, uh, they may not even, you know, been growing up in Berry or whatever. So, but it's still going to benefit our city, if that makes sense. So, um, I'm not sure if you're open to possibly having that conversation prior to passing this amendment.
So through your worship to, um, Counselor Harris, I am, I guess I'm coming at, um, this and I'm happy to cut off the sentence out with program metrics. Um, and perhaps, uh, you know, I'm, I'm open to following up with them. I did hear statements, uh, during the, the meeting about, uh, what they were and were not looking to share around information. And I appreciate that at the stage in, in the development. I think after two years, I mean, I, I'm not, of course, and coming from a healthcare, public health background, we're not talking. About releasing information at a level of, of public information. It would be pretty rough after two years, uh, and at a level that would be appropriate. But it would be some indication of, um, who's being served and supported by this, um, through, uh, locally generated revenue. And from that, ideally seeing that there is a formalized relationship, integrating and referrals are being effectively done with other supporting resources and social services across our city. Did individuals intend to stay or depending on, on their next steps? Um, so my intention is that I did not hear, uh, an intention to capture metrics or share metrics. Um, I'm just looking at a pathway, if it needs to be in this motion, to ensure that some information is coming back to give us an indication to say. You know, knowing that there is, there is a reliance on revenue gen- generated from curbside collection. Is there also any type of jeopardy in two years if we're not seeing people donating and giving to bins? Um, in a way in which that's expected. Um, so if there's, you know, a loss in revenue expected, what is the risk to the program? And how do we look at that in our conversations?
Counselor Harris.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Congle, through you, Mayor Lehman. Uh, maybe would it be possible to reword your amendments to say, and that staff report back to finance and corporate services committee. Prior to consideration of the two year renewal, uh, with program metrics. Decided upon and agreed upon between Cornerstone to Recovery and staff? Yeah?
Sure, I'm open to that through your worship, uh, to, to Ms. Harris. Um, absolutely fine. I, I'm, I'm more concerned that there's at least some pathway to be able to, uh, request formally. Um, that, um, some information is able to come back, uh, with the potential ask for renewal.
No, that's, I, I agree. I think, I mean, to be honest, I was kind of expecting it in the wording that we had in the original motion. But if you want to make it a little bit more specific, that's totally fine. And I think it's great. Sorry, through you, Mayor Lehman. Um, to, uh, as long as it's in, in communication with Cornerstone to Recovery, then I feel comfortable with that myself.
Thank you.
Okay, so if I might jump in here just on the, on the wording. So I think after the words pop, uh, program metrics, um, it would be, um, program metrics in consultation with Cornerstone to Recovery. Or program metrics developed in consultation with Cornerstone to Recovery. Is that satisfactory to both? Uh, uh, the mover of the amendment, Counselor Congle?
I believe that will meet my intention. Thank you. Yes, that's great.
Uh, thanks for that. So on the revised wording of the amendment, any further comment? I'll just briefly, oh, sorry, go ahead. Uh, Jim Harris, Counselor Jim Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I apologize. I, I did try to speed up a little bit there, so I might have missed something. I apologize. Maybe if, I think we've got to where we were, what I was thinking, I was, uh, Counselor Congle was really trying to give us some detail on. The amended, uh, paragraph two, which talks about, you know, how we're going to know in two years, whether we do two more years. And we don't want to get into the specifics of the treatment because the reality is. We have so few women treatment centers in the province, people from all over the, the province will probably be coming here. I mean, that's just the way it is, right? Cause you're desperate for services. You go where they are. So right now, all of our women go outside of Berry because we don't have one. So this is, this is the reality. So I would say that if we can find something just to give the business performance and environmental sustainability department something to gauge the next two years by. That's really what you're after, right? Counselor Congress Congo. So, okay. And you may have gotten there. I apologize. I froze up for a bit. So if you and Counselor Harris have got there, then, uh, thank you for catching me up. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Counselor Harris. Any other, uh, any other comments on the amendment? Uh, no, I'll just say, I, I think it is a good idea to have the reporting back. Um, I, I do think perhaps, uh, some of the information, um, that is available, uh, would be subject to constraints. So, or that was, uh, uh, discussed. So I agree, it should be done, uh, in consultation, of course, with Cornerstone. I, I guess the, the one asterisk I'd put on this and it would be relevant to the main motion as well is. Uh, another reminder that this isn't a contract with, um, a, a service provider. Uh, what we're doing, and that's why paragraph three in the first amendment was necessary. What we're doing is permitting only one organization to place clothing donation bins, but we're not paying for a service. So, so the, the issue here is whether or not we're content in two years, I guess, to, to continue to have that arrangement with only one organization. And I guess it's an important distinction because this isn't a procurement. It, it is a decision to allow only one organization to collect donations, which they're then going to spend on a particular program in the city. And, um, so I think when the report, uh, comes back, what we'll want to know is whether it's working out for them. Um, and, uh, whether it's working out for us in, in the sense of textiles being diverted from our landfill. Uh, and people, people receiving treatment in Berry. So I will support the amendment because I think that's a good question, but, um, I, I, I wouldn't want this sort of misinterpreted as us setting. Sort of conditions on a future contract. It's not a contract. It's a, it's a decision to allow a social enterprise to receive donations on a, you know, on a, on a local monopoly basis. Because they are able with that to do, to do this great work. So, uh, okay, on the amendment, I'll call the question. Uh, those in favor of the amendment, please indicate. Is anyone opposed to the amendment? None? That carries. On the main motion as amended twice, any further comments? Okay, I'll call the question, those in favor of the motion as amended. That's unanimous. Thank you very much, members of the general committee. That is.
Separate report.
Separate reports been requested. Madam Clerk, I'll do that one as a separate report for council. Uh, or separate section anyway. Uh, that brings us to the staff reports. And the first staff report that was held, uh, was regarding the sandbox. Counselor McCann, you held this.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Lehman. I have got a amendment, the main motion on the floor. I'd like to put a, uh, amendment, please.
Yep, go ahead.
To amend paragraph six to read as follows, that the two year lease agreement extension with the sandbox be approved in principle. Subject to the sandbox successfully addressing the assessment parameters identified in motion seventeen G two five two. Secondly, to add to the following paragraph, that the sandbox be provided $300,000 in funding from the community benefit reserve. In response to the request for capital funding.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor McCann. Uh, we have an amendment. Uh, the first part of the amendment, uh, would be to approve in principle a two year extension, but subject to the agreement. Uh, on, uh, assessment metrics, I guess. Uh, and then the second part is, uh, to approve $300,000, uh, in response to the request for capital. Go ahead, Counselor McCann.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Lehman. I do have a bit of a lengthy, um, explanation on why I believe that council should, uh, invest $300,000 extra into the sandbox. So hopefully, uh, council and you mayor will, uh, will give me that leniency. I'll try to be as quick and, uh, as direct as possible. You know, it comes down to it, uh, whenever we invest, whether it's personally, privately, in business, especially our taxpayer dollars. I believe that, you know, the three P's come in effect where, you know, the people, the process, the product and service have to be top shelf. And for those who don't know about the sandbox, whether they're, uh, on council or whether they're, they're taxpayers that are watching. You know, there's four main members of the sandbox that are, were instrumental on getting us to where we are now. The first one is Craig Bush. Uh, he's a serial entrepreneur and he's, he's a visionary. He's a real global individual. Uh, Chris Garapi, which is, uh, specializes in building, uh, materials and, uh, he helped with the design. He's no longer with the organization, but he was instrumental on lifting this off the ground. You've got Tom, uh, Thomas Ambo, who's a, uh, business entrepreneur himself, uh, and, uh, he's a visionary. And, and I've heard this more than, than once in my, uh, in my lifetime, that he's brought more companies, uh, public than anybody else in Berry. A real, a real mastermind when it comes to business. And then we've got Joanne McFaul, who is a managing partner at Bearster and another strong pillar. And this, the sandbox organization has done some great things over the past year. And as more members come into the sandbox, it builds its strength. And I've been asking around council and, uh, and business leaders, you know, what they think about sandbox. And I do believe that there's quite a bit of, um, mystery that people don't actually know exactly what they do. So I thought I would maybe take this opportunity as quick as possible to let, uh, sorry, to let council know why I think this $300,000 investment is, uh, is needed. Uh, and, uh, why we should support, uh, sandbox as we did in past council. Um, you know, there's two real main reasons why we should invest at $300,000. Their first one is quite simply, they've brought more than $300,000 of value into our building. And I'll explain that in, in a few minutes. And also to the economic value to our community. To give a little history, I, you know, I, Craig Bush and his team came to pass council and, uh, we really supported, uh, sandbox. Because it was really a, a new entity. I, city of Berry said, okay, we're going to, uh, investigate through council decision. City of Berry hired, uh, St. Regis to do a report. They came out and said, everything that you want to do, it's going to cost roughly, uh, 1.4 million dollars to build up the sandbox. The way that they want to build it and the way the city of Berry want to build it. And I don't know how we got there, but city staff and, um, the sandbox decided that it would cost a million dollars. Well, they spent 1.8 million. So there's an $800 surplus that the sandbox is responsible for. And that's why we're here today to, uh, see if we can relieve some of that financial burden, uh, because I believe that, uh, that it's a good investment. You know, I talked to Craig Bush, I believe, uh, Thursday or Friday, and he really broke it down to me. I've talked to a few members, uh, since then, and, uh, he believes that, you know, the $800,000 surplus was needed. Because of the vision that they have to attract the type of people and speakers and businesses. and businesses and do what they believe they do. This was a must spend. And, but they also recognized that there's needs and there's wants. And some of that $800,000 was a want, and they believe that the City of Barry taxpayers don't need to, you know, participate in some of that money, which would be like the patio and some of the floor-to-ceiling windows. So it's really $600,000 that they're saying that they're over budgeted. So they're asking the City of Barry, asking us as councillors, asking the City of Barry to get on board to help support that $300,000 loss, which would be half. And I just did some quick math, you know, I asked for the financials. I know Counselor Harvey talked in great detail with Craig Bush as well. And looking at the financials, you know, they put an HVAC system throughout the building at a cost of $385,000. The City of Barry kicked back about $165,000, so just a little over $200,000 in upgrades, I would say, that came to our building. The electrical, they put in about $170,000. The city kicked back $6,000. So another upgrade of about $160,000. Plumbing was another $50,000. And drywall and installation was about another $100,000. So that's over 500K that they put into that building that I believe if a construction company or another industry were to go into our building, that all of these upgrades would benefit the new tenant. I'm not talking about the grass on the walls. I'm not talking about the elevator. I'm not talking about the movable walls. All of the, as a senior staff neighbor said, maybe some of the vanity items that they picked. But these are, these are our extra costs that I believe that have increased the value of our building. So that's kind of the finance part. Now maybe I'd like to talk about, you know, the economic value to the community. If anybody watched past council, they know that I was a big supporter of the Sandbox when they came. I really thought it was a great, unique opportunity where you would take entrepreneurs and intrapreneurs together, working together, and really giving an employee the empowerment to treat this business like their own. It just really hit a light bulb in my head, and I thought, that's an amazing, you know, strategy. And in talking to some people, they really believe that this is more of an incubator style of a system, when in fact, it's not an incubator style, it's an entrepreneurial and innovation center. And some may say that this is semantics, that they're both the same thing. But I had a great discussion today with Craig Bush about it. And he really said that an incubator, you know, is really a platform, a model, where you pay to play. You actually are in an incubator system, and you have to pay to be there. You're surrounded by like-minded people, mostly in the tech industry, and that's the benefit there. And we see incubators in the KW and some pods in Toronto, and especially in California. Where this is different, this entrepreneurial and innovation center, it really helps the small business, the startups. People that may have a great invention, or maybe great accountants, or great salespeople, great marketers, but maybe are horrible at every other piece that needs to be successful in this business. And the Sandbox is there to guide them, to help them, to connect them to other industries, other people, free of charge. They also help out medium-sized business. And they also are helping out large businesses that maybe have been around for decades. But because we're living in a world right now where everything needs to change dramatically, especially with globalization, that you've got businesses that did the same thing for 50 years. But now if they don't make change, they're going to sink. And the Sandbox is here to give them some of that innovative spirit and then thinking. So, you know, what's the model? Why would the City of Barry want to invest in this? Well, it's free to all businesses in Barry. They don't charge any business to come in and to get all of this service, all of this help, all of this instruction. And so how is that a benefit to our city? Well, of course, businesses that flourish in Barry are going to employ people in Barry, going to spend money in Barry. And the multiple, I'm not sure what that is, right? They also really specialize in networking, and more importantly, it's support. There really are a support program, and they support in human resource, finance, sales. Right now, because of this COVID-19, they're really specializing in sales training, virtual sales training. So it's real-life, real-time help. Obviously, marketing, they've got a fantastic CEO program that really networks a lot of CEOs and really gets companies from A to B, hopefully to, you know, DNF. You know, we talk about, you know, why, again, is this important? Well, startups historically, you know, have a 60% failure rate within the first three years. And they've got an 80% failure rate in the first five years. I don't know a better word than passionate. But Craig Bush was just animated in front of me, telling him that it is Sandbox's drive, their ambition, their hunger to bring that number down and make Barry a global entity where those numbers change. They are fierce when it comes to helping the entrepreneur. And that's something that I can definitely back. You know, what are some, like, real tangible assets to, like, you know, that's all maybe stuff that you can't really, you know, quantify. But what you can quantify is the people and the entities and the businesses that they are attracting. You know, they brought in three chief economic experts. They're not, they're kind of hard to come by. And the history of Barry supposedly, we've only brought in one. So those are some of the presentations that they're getting. And they're getting, like, real big thinkers and some real big change. So, you know, their connectivity is connecting to the BIA. They're connecting to the Chamber. They're connecting to the Henry Bernick Center. They're connecting to the small businesses, the median businesses, the startups. And they're also connecting to the City of Barry. The City of Barry does have a small business center. I believe they've got an operational budget of a quarter million dollars. And they actually have an office inside the Sandbox. So we already are partnering up. We have, the boat has already left the launch. We have already invested them. And, you know, Stephanie Slieter, I'm sure if I gave her a moment to speak, would speak in great detail and highlights, you know, how great Sandbox is. So I've talked a lot. I know I'm pretty passionate about small business. I am a small business owner. I relate to small business. My DNA is programmed in small business. And I just wish when I started out in my early twenties, I had a service like this because it would have made, it would have made things a lot less stressful. I do want to end my, my ask, my pitch with maybe telling you a real-life story. There's a company called Veta Spa. I know that Counselor Ward is good friends with the owner. I know Mayor Lehman knows him well. I can't remember whoever Eric has said that he's crossed paths with. But they've got a spa, much like the Scandinavian spa. Their actual model is more of a Nordic spa out in Quebec and other parts of the world. But it's a spa, basically, an outdoor spa. And they're going to have it in, or up in Horseshoe Valley. So you may ask me, well, Mike, who cares about a business that is going to be operational in another city? Well, let me tell you why it's so important. Eric had an investor, a foreign investor, that pulled out a couple of years ago. Basically, took the rug right under his feet, and all the time and effort and money he's put into investing in this spa was going to go to the wayside. He met Craig Bush. He met the Sandbox. And very quickly, the Sandbox was instrumental. Eric told me today, I called Eric to ask permission if I could bring his name up and talk about some business details. And he was emphatic that if it was not for the Sandbox, this spa would never happen. And this is not a Mickey Mouse spa. This is a $17 million operation that's going to be in the hills of Horseshoe Valley. It's going to be spectacular, right? And of that $17 million, $12 million is going to go right back into the Barry economy. Because they've hired Barry businesses to actually do the construction, do the architectural work, do the concrete, do the windows and doors, do the glass, right? And so that $12 million, I mean, I called Mr. Miller, our finance director, to ask him what the multiplier would be on $12 million. And, I mean, it was over the phone, but I'm sure he looked at it like I had three heads. He had no idea, like no one would. But it's going to be either double or triple that investment in our city. Also, you know, Erica is going to be employing anywhere between 80 and 100 people, 130 people. And I said, well, probably half of them are going to be from Barry. Well, he snapped at me and said, no, they're all from Barry. So there's another 100-plus people that are going to be employed at this spa, right? And so, you know, I could go on, and I'm sure some of you would love me to go on. But, you know, I just really want to end, you know, by saying, I think this $300,000 ask is a benefit to everybody in Barry economically. And it's a benefit especially in times of COVID, because you don't hit the gas, you don't hit the brake in times of a dismay. Sometimes it's better, it's better strategy to hit the accelerator. And that's what car racers do, and I learned that one from Sandbox myself. So, you know, before I drop the mic, I'll tell you that the greatest thing about this Sandbox is that they've done all this on year one. I can't wait to see what they do on year 10. Thank you.
Okay, other comments on the amendment. Counselor Natalie Harris.
Um, actually, no, I'm good. Maybe I will in a minute. I'm good. Sorry, I apologize.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Sergio Morales.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. And I will never apologize for my inauguration speech anymore. Just wanted to clarify a small detail. I think, as we can't touch upon this, but just to kind of provide, this is really what stands out at me. $377,000 of what was spent by the Sandbox was to bring up the building to, you know, to optimal situation. So translation, even if the Sandbox had not gone in here, even if we had just preserved our own asset for the purpose of being a smart city, we would have spent about $377,000 to do that. So when we look at the numbers that we have, I think it would be wise for members of General Committee to exclude that $377,000 that the city would have had to put anyways into it as well. So that's context. You know, it's not perfect that we're looking at $300,000 more, but the impact the Sandbox has had and the reputation that it's causing. As the council member on the board, you know, we're always sometimes looking for new board members. We're looking for people to contribute, and we're getting names from the GTA. We're getting names that normally reach, we wouldn't have had. And this is very important. And like Counselor McCann said, this is only about a year or so of work that they've done, and it's been phenomenal. And if you're looking at purely from the numbers perspective, look at the capital, look at the increased value of our building, so the increased assessed value that we are realizing on our city asset, and also the fact that we're continuing to invest in that building and down the line with the farmer's market, coming forward with new tenants in the former Burger King space, that is all creating critical mass. And that's kind of creating an ecosystem, a location where people are going to want to go. So I am in favor of Counselor McCann's amendment.
Thanks very much, Counselor Morales. Others who wish to comment on the amendment? Counselor Harvey.
Thank your worship. Like, Counselor McCann, you're very impressive trying to sell it. And I'll be quite honest with you, after spending almost three hours with people from the Sandbox, you're just as passionate as they are. But I'm still having difficulty in really wanting to support this moving forward. And again, the Sandbox does great things. As it's been highlighted, they've only been around for a year, and they've done quite a lot in a year. The city has already supported them to the tune of the eight seventy-seven. I know Counselor Morales highlighted the fact that three seventy-seven was to go into the hard costs in relation to the building, because it was almost a 30-year building and did need some upgrading. However, not every lease includes that when you're beginning anyway. It depends on the terms of the lease at the beginning. So I don't necessarily buy that that's something that the city would have necessarily been 100% responsible for, regardless of what tenant would have been moving into this, this location. These were decisions that obviously the group decided to make moving forward. It's a beautiful place. They do great things. But their biggest successes, like Counselor McCann highlighted, are not here in the City of Barry. They're in our bordering municipalities. Yes, there's some economic spin-off, because some of our companies here in Barry are being used for construction and things like that. However, Barry's already committed $877,000 to this organization. Prior to this, we already had our own small business center. A lot of what they do is very similar. However, this takes it to a whole other level, I will agree. But to think that we need to commit another $300,000 of taxpayers' money after there's already $877,000 into it, I just have great difficulty with. Like, I mean, the town of Veniceville stepped up at the beginning. They're listed as one of the initial donors when the Sandbox was being first brought to us. But I don't see anybody else in the bordering municipalities that have had any cash involved in this, let alone the county. And this is really, like, from speaking to them, I very much learned that this is, their whole game plan is to eventually become countywide and to be assisting everybody and not just Barry. And I guess I'm just getting a little tired of constantly everything being Barry, because we seem to be the big brother in the county. And for whatever reason, they seem to think we have deep pockets, which we don't. We're on a slippery slope this year. Staff have done a tremendous job in balancing the books as best they can. But we're still going to be running a deficit. $2 million is projected to date. And again, that's just one more layer that, is this really the right time to be considering this? Because we've even had smaller asks that haven't moved forward. And it's just a difficult one to be able to justify to my residents. And I've reached out to a few residents just to see what they would think as the small person, opposed to the business person. And what would they think is a good idea moving forward? And unfortunately, not one person said that this, they would be in favor of another $300,000 of their tax money going towards this Sandbox. And like, I mean, again, it does great. We want them to succeed. But I just think that we need to give them a little more time and maybe give them an opportunity to potentially reach out to other municipalities and the county to see what can be done to help rectify this problem. Because in the end, we got to be all partners together here, and this can't just be a Barry-led initiative to assist Barry and the bordering communities.
Thanks, Counselor Harvey. Counselor Natalie Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I guess I just wanted to throw this out there. I know it is, it's possibly more relevant than we're thinking. But I agree, you know, we're talking about a lot of success with the Sandbox that has happened outside of Barry and the small businesses that are in our city and residents, et cetera. They don't know what the Sandbox does. My really kind of off-the-cuff request, and I'm sure the Sandbox would be like, yeah, this is the last thing we feel like looking into. But I just don't know about the name of the Sandbox. Like, if we have, they provide such amazing services. And if we had the small businesses in Barry really know what the Sandbox does more, it's just, there's so many great things that they do. I love the Sandbox. I think they do great things. But if you don't know what the Sandbox is, it's just something that I've heard in the past as well. Like, what is the Sandbox? What is that? And they're like, oh, my goodness, it does all these things. Like, no one would know. I just wanted to put it out there publicly that maybe it's something to look into because we might get a lot more return on our investment if these small businesses knew what the Sandbox was.
Thanks, Counselor Harris. On the amendment, others who wish to comment. Deputy Mayor Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I just wanted to make one correction. Maybe Mr. McCann was going to point this out, but it's not taxpayers' money that's going into this. I believe the motion said that it would come from the Community Benefits Fund, which isn't from taxpayers' money. I mean, it is technically not. It's revenue that we've got from our dividend from Electra. And it's meant to be used for community projects. So just technically, it's not. I don't want anybody thinking it's tax, it's directly taxpayers' money. Thanks. I don't want anybody thinking it's tax, it's directly taxpayers' money. Thanks.
Sorry. Counselor Aylwin, and then Counselor Harvey again.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. You know, the Sandbox has become quite the anchor in Ward 2 in our downtown. It's a beautiful space, and I hope those watching at home will take the opportunity to check out the services that the Sandbox provides. I think it's, you know, still early on to tell the results of the services they're providing there. It's only one year in. And that was a great sales pitch from, from Counselor McCann, but I do have some hesitations here. We originally committed as a city $500,000 to be invested in the Sandbox. We're now up over 800,000, and now they're looking for another 300,000. That'll bring us up over $1 million contributed to the organization. I don't doubt that the Sandbox does great work and that they have helped the business community in the city. And I am looking to see more of the results of the work that they're doing. But I think it would be premature for us to, you know, dump another $300,000 into the project without knowing more. It's my understanding that this $300,000 isn't a make or break effort and that this is a private sector-led initiative. And I think that's great, that, you know, the business community is really rallying around this project. And I think we should keep it that way and really encourage that private sector investment in this project. So, I agree with Counselor Harvey very much so in his, in his comments. You know, we have organizations that come asking for capital funding for great projects, and we've said no to them for, for much smaller amounts. Now, we're getting asked for another $300,000 on top of the more than $800,000 we've already given. And I just don't think I can justify this at this time to my constituents. But I am open to, you know, working with the Sandbox down the road if they do end up needing more support, because I do recognize they are an important part of the downtown community. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Aylwin. Back to you, Counselor Harvey.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to clarify one thing, because I, I found Deputy Mayor Ward's comment a little misleading, especially with this being a public meeting. Like, I mean, in my opinion, and I'll be quite honest with you, and any resident that I would probably speak to would have the same opinion that, in fact, this is taxpayers' money that we're talking about here, whether it's transfer payments from the federal government through the provincial government or through our dividends in Electra, which ultimately the residents are the ones that are part owners in all of this. It's, it's, it's taxpayers' money that any of our reserve funds are created from. So, I, I just found it a little misleading that it was being spoken about as if it was not taxpayers' money, when in fact, every dollar we play with is taxpayers' money, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Harvey. Counselor McCann.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. You know, I appreciate all my colleagues', you know, insights, questions. But maybe I think this is the time to maybe go a little deeper. I've got the utmost respect for you, Counselor Harvey. And, and so, you know, I don't disagree with you that the, the community fund is taxpayers' money. But I mean, we, we have this money. It's, it's designed to spend to enhance our community. Where do you see yourself spending this money and when what areas? If not supporting the entrepreneurs of Berry, and just to give you a little some context to why maybe I'm being so direct, which hopefully you don't mind me being direct, is like Berry is like the third largest entrepreneurial city in Canada, right? The driving force behind business is the entrepreneurial sector, right? And I just believe that if you look at our city staff and you look at Stephanie Schlichter, and she runs the, the Berry, I lost the name, the Berry, very, very small business center. You know, I asked her today, you know, if you were to replicate and duplicate the Sandbox, and she caught me off the mic, there's no way we can, you know, but what would you, what, what kind of temp or what financial implication we have? And she was reluctant to tell me, but would I say it'd be close to a quarter million dollars? And she basically nodded her head yes, right? So, therefore, the investment of $300,000, if you look at it as a return on investment that we're getting from the city, I believe that that is, is money well spent. So, I asked you a question. I, I want to give you a little time to think about it, because I want to kind of give you a little more context to why I believe, like, are we just going to keep this money held forever? Or where do you see us spending it and why not in the entrepreneurs?
Actually, it's not so much where, where I would like to see it spent. It's a matter of making sure that our, any of our reserve funds, especially with this one being the Community Improvement Fund, is that it, it gets split accordingly opposed to an excessively high percentage going to any one organization, whether it's the Sandbox or any other organization that comes forward or, or even like our own projects. Like, I mean, all of a sudden, we're, we're not going to use 80% of it to just go one direction or another. Like, I mean, we've, we've had discussions ourselves, and I know, like, one of the things my residents have asked for is a splash pad, but we're not talking about splash pads right now. Because that, that ended up hitting an indicator with a staff report about a year ago, and it's gone nowhere because of the, because of the cost and obviously trying to find a location to boot. But that, again, as an elected official, my priorities are my residents' priorities. I might have some of my own personal ones, but realistically, I'm elected to represent my residents, and my priorities will be their priorities. So, the big thing with this is just a matter of, I think it's, we've already committed 877,000 to this, and I think committing another 300,000 is very much overcommitting, because we're already encroaching almost 100% larger support over the initial half a million that the previous council endorsed to support. And when you see that increase, we're already overcommitted, and to throw another 300,000 towards this, other than the fact it's a great, I'm not disputing what the Sandbox does. What I'm disputing is whether we're already overcommitted, and now we're going to really overcommit ourselves to one particular facet of our city opposed to using the funds to be, possibly be distributed a little more evenly and be able to support more facets of our society. We have, we have a lot of issues going on in our city. Obviously, the business perspective is one, but there's obviously a lot of other community-related issues that this money could also be go-to, be used for also. And it's a matter of just not making sure that we overcommit to any one area.
Yeah, I, Mayor Lehman, am I free to speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, Gary, Mr. Harvey, Counselor Harvey, you know, I, I really appreciate your insights, because it just actually strengthens my point, and let me tell you why. There's two things that you mentioned. You said that we've already committed $850,000, right? And you're happy with that investment, right?
I'll be quite honest with you, I'm not 100% happy with the fact that a project that originally the city committed $500,000 to ended up ballooning to 877,000. From a business perspective, from a fiscal responsibility perspective, who would, who would ever be happy to, to think that somebody, something jumped by an extra 100%? Like, the, and like, I mean, obviously, the city covered it, but to think that we're now going to even commit even more? There's a hu- huge hurdle there. And like I said, I had great conversation with Mr. Bush himself for almost two hours today, actually, and prior to that, to their executive director had great conversation. They're passionate people, the Sandbox is doing great things, but eventually, we have to draw a line in the sand as to where we're going to stop the commitment. I knew you were going to laugh at that one.
Is that sand in, in the, in the box, Counselor Harvey? So, listen, I, I really want to dig, dig, dig it deep, and I think that, I think if you open your mind right now, Counselor Harvey, and the rest of council that maybe has a little speculation, I actually think this is going to be a win-win for both of us. We invested $500,000 originally. You know, a senior staff member and I were talking Thursday, Friday last week, and we both made it, he made a comment, and I agree with it, that they fast, if they asked us for the 800,000 last term, we would have given it to them, because we were supportive of the Sandbox. We actually have not technically invested 850,000, Gary, that's our Counselor Harvey. And this is what I was getting at. If you're happy, if you're okay with the investment of 850, so at $350,000 that you're having trouble with, because then you don't want to invest more, the facts are, and staff can jump in, we gave them $500,000 as a, as a grant, but then in the contract, we spent, the city of Berry gave another $230,000 to upgrade their, their HVAC system, right? So, you're including that in the ask, but that was the contract for them to go into that building. Thirdly, city staff knew that the Sandbox had economies of scale and had great resources. The city of Berry asked them to put an elevator in, and they did it at a cost of, I believe, $100,000, right? Which you're including in that 850. Those are costs that the city of Berry would have done on their own, and it would have cost more. So, I, hopefully, I made that very crystal clear, that we have not given them an extra $350,000. These were upgrades that the city asked the, the Sandbox to, to do. So, I think it's unfair for council, when we're negotiating, debating if we're going to give them another $300,000, to include that into this ask. As far as I'm concerned, we've given them $500,000, okay? Secondly, you want a splash pad. Well, I tell you that I'll never forget the day that I asked for a splash pad. I was talking to Don McAlpine, and I said, I want a splash pad in my ward. She's like, don't worry, you're just asking for information, no one's going to turn this down. Holy smokes, did I get a handful of what, what? Mike Prowl, before he, he was a counselor, obviously, in Ward 6, he just looked at me before he came to the council chamber and said, there is no way I'm supporting a splash pad of $300,000. And it was a great lesson, because I learned that you had to really network and communicate with, with other counselors, and that's what I hopefully am doing right now with the Sandbox. So, your splash pad would be a perfect example of using the resources of the Sandbox. The Sandbox has a network that's global, and we'd be able, with efficiencies, be able to get that splash pad at a lower price. So, when you come to council and you ask for your splash pad for your ward, which I would completely support, right? I believe in, in getting out and then fresh air and exercising, that would be an entity that you're, maybe you're not thinking about it. This is a dynamic group that isn't just working on making money. It's about building stronger communities. So, I just want you to not comment. I want to put that seed, let it sit for a few minutes, because I want your vote, Gary, oh, Counselor Harvey. And I believe if you really get over the $330,000, that you're going to vote yes. And this is going to better your ward and better the city of Berry. Now, let me switch over to Council Ayrwin, if you don't mind, Mayor Lehman.
I do have a speakers list, Counsel McCann.
Am I able to reply to?
No, no.
Uh, I'm going to ask Counselor McCann to finish up his remarks, and then I'd like to get the others who haven't spoken a chance to speak to this, because we do have other items on the agenda, and I am going to bring us to a vote on the amendment soon. Go ahead, Counsel McCann.
Well, I do appreciate that, Mayor Lehman. Now, this is obviously a passionate motion, and I do believe in it strongly. So, Counsel Ayrwin, you, you said you need more information, right? And Counselor Harris, I was going to get to you next, but I'll kind of put you in the same category. You're saying that the Sandbox name isn't something that you liked. Well, that's marketing. What is the Sandbox? Marketing's not to sell you. It's to invoke questions and evoke, you know, what is that? We have to understand, they're a year old, and COVID has been in eight months of that year. Like, if you really understood what they've done, it's remarkable. It's not good, it's remarkable. So, I just, I want to end my last question, Mayor Lehman, with the question back to Counsel Aylwin. What other questions do you need so I can get your vote to support this $300,000?
Okay, thanks, Counsel McCann. Counselor Jim Harris, you're next on the speakers list.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I'm not sure who can answer this question, but I appreciated getting the inaugural year-end review document from the Sandbox. And I was noting in the document, both from the managing director and from the founder and CEO, they both mentioned the benefit to the region, and I think that's great, and I think that's a wonderful vision. So, my question goes to, if we're going to benefit the region, when I look at the list of partners, I see Innisville, I see Simcoe County, but I don't see Oramodonte or Springwater or Essa. So, my question would be, you know, I don't know, through Mayor Lehman to, maybe it's Ms. Schlichter, do we know what the strategy has been from the Sandbox to engage other communities in investment in the Sandbox, given its regional goal to be impactful for all areas?
Thanks, Counsel Harris. Ms. Schlichter, I know there was an approach made to the county. Obviously, there was to Innisville. Can you tell us whether they were approaching any of the other lower-tier, any of our other neighbors?
Mayor Lehman, through you to Counselor Harris, I am not aware of other municipalities that they approached. That doesn't mean that they didn't. I am just not aware.
Great. Thank you. And I'm wondering, is, is there any utility or manner in which we can facilitate this or encourage this or request this within our parameters here? And I'm not sure who that goes to, Mayor Lehman, who could answer that question, if I ask Ms. Schlichter or, or yourself? But is there any remedy for us to make that suggestion?
Ms. Schlichter may be able to advise or Counsel Morales, but why don't we start with Ms. Schlichter?
Mayor Lehman, through you to Counselor Harris. Certainly, I think council has the ability to amend a motion to provide direction to the Sandbox or provide a request to the Sandbox. That would probably be the best option. Perhaps the CEO press may have some additional context to provide.
Okay, thanks for that.
Thanks, Mayor Lehman. I just wanted to do an update, members of committee, that the Sandbox did make a presentation to the Simcoe County CAOs, well, it seems like a lifetime ago, but let's just call it pre-COVID. There certainly was interest in the value of the Sandbox as a regional player, and I think that started the discussions with the, with the county on, on what that could look like. I think the relationship with the county, to be fair, is not yet fully formed, but they, they have had discussions. And I would imagine that that's, continues to be an opportunity. We can certainly take that advice back, but I did want to update you that they had made a presentation to the Simcoe County CAOs, and certainly there was interest, but the initial discussion was around the county looking at it first and going from there.
Thank you, CEO press. And so, I'm wondering, is there, and I'm struggling with the wording, but I think maybe this could be in our motion that there's some sort of ask, request for the Sandbox, because, to reach out to the municipalities that immediately surround Berry. I don't know if I have them all in my head, but Innisville and, and Springwater, Oramodonte, and, and you can correct me on who should be added, but, but if we, if, could we do that? And I do agree with both sides, really, and I think I'm, I do feel that the Sandbox adds great value, that small business, especially given COVID and the recovery, will need a place like the Sandbox to help accelerate their recovery and find innovations to move forward to the new economy, which is going to take a whole new meeting, I would assume after COVID. And I also am excited to think about the opportunity, and Counselor McCann mentioned about the small business success or slash failure rate, and wouldn't that be incredible to know that in Berry, the success rate is far better than that which other communities have? Because we have, have these incredible resources for entrepreneurs to be able to lean on to fill the gaps in their knowledge, because it can't be all things, all people at all times. But the Sandbox can find you that. So, I really do like the idea of the Sandbox. I think it's, it's forward-looking, it's innovative, and has great potential after such short time. But I'm also wondering, is an opportunity to engage our, our partners in, in the region who will also benefit? And we've heard from the examples of, from Oramodonte and, and Horseshoe, that there have been advantages to the areas around, not just Berry. So, and I'm, so I'm struggling with the wording, but an amendment that could speak to having the Sandbox consult with municipalities, neighbor municipalities in the region regarding contributions to the $300,000 ask.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Harris. I have Counsel Ripma and then Counsel Morales. I would like to bring the amendment to a vote, so I'd ask members of General Committee to keep their remarks. So I'd ask members of general committee to keep their remarks short. We do have two other lengthy items on the agenda. So councillor Ripma, you haven't spoken to this yet on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My internet has not been working off and on tonight, so I'm not, I'm hoping that I can get through this.
Councillor Ripma, if you can hear me, you froze just as you started. I would suggest turning off your video to be able to speak. Sometimes that works. If you can turn off your camera, we may be able to hear you.
Our businesses really need it. We've got an agreement with our share of the renovations. We've done everything that we need to do. But, and now they come to ask for another $300,000. My problem is that this is capital funding. This is not entrepreneurs there that know how to run their money at this point. It's very early in the game and from what they've given us, I don't think we really need to provide them with capital funding at this point, and certainly operating funding seems to support this amendment. And I'll quit now before my internet quits.
Councillor Ripma, I'm not sure how well you can hear us. Unfortunately, you cut in and out during your remarks. I think the general nature of your remarks was very clear. You're opposed to the amendment and some of the reasons why. So unfortunately, we're going to have to keep working on your remote technology. It sounds like, or maybe it's just tonight, but I think members of general committee. Oh, go ahead councillor Ripma.
No, that's fine. I think technology has beat me tonight.
Well, I think we heard your opposition and many of the reasons for it, even if it was on and off a little bit. Councillor Morales, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. It's not councillor Ripma's fault. It's not technology. Ward 1 power is glitching, as you saw me doing the Halloween thing earlier. So it's both of us. My quick point on this was just to clarify the question about other surrounding municipalities paying into this. The answer is the Sandbox Board is doing that as we speak. I got Craig Bush, who has been brought up before messaging me while this was being brought up a couple of minutes ago and saying they are actively doing that. So do they need council direction? No. Does that make, would that give other members of council some level of comfort? Yes. Is it necessary? No. That's actively doing it. I do remember just before COVID, there was a tour of the Sandbox by the County of Simcoe. Stephen Schnitzer, I believe Mayor Lindolin and a couple of other representatives that were, was kind of that first meeting to showcase them, what's going on and eventually bring them in. One of the challenges they're facing, and it's a challenge that could be overcome, is the Sandbox by some parties is being viewed as a Berry only, specifically as a downtown Berry thing. So we need to kind of, it's just, that's just, you know, some liaising and some marketing to showcase that it's, you know, that because it is having, helping businesses across the county, it could be not only used by a little bit more countywide individuals, but also supported financially by countywide municipalities. So that's in the works and so be, you know, have faith that that's happening.
Okay, thanks councillor Morales. Any other comments on the amendment? Okay, I'll keep it short and I appreciate the passionate views on both sides of this. The fiscal sort of conservative view that has been expressed and as well those who have been passionate about their support for the Sandbox. I am going to support the amendment, but maybe for two reasons that are a little different than what's been brought up tonight. First of all, this project is completely unique compared to any other city project where we contribute funding in the sense that it was driven by a series of partners in the business community. And I had the opportunity to ask a number of questions about this report and get answers on them. And I believe councillors were circulated that information as well. There's been more than $1 million of in-kind support put into this by the private sector partners. And that value goes straight to the city's assets. So when I step back from this, we have a space, the upper floor of the bus terminal that has now received $1 million of additional support, which a normal city project, if we fitted up a building, that would not have happened. And yes, I think councillors are quite right to say, we didn't approve this. It's over budgeted. I, you know, I think we're in our rights to question how we got here and no, I'm not happy about it. I don't think we should be happy about it. I agree with just about everybody else who's spoken tonight. That being said, I believe our private, the private partners or the business community has rallied around the Sandbox. The numbers are clear in the information that was given to us. And this is 133 paragraph staff report, supported by an extensive amount of information from the Sandbox itself. And for an organization that only got to operate for less than a year before COVID, I do agree that they have had a remarkable impact and the kind of very clear demonstratable impact that we look for in an organization that we partner with to support the business community. So my one big picture reason for supporting the amendment is that an extensive amount of money has been put into a city-owned asset here. And as the staff report says, right in the document, our staff checked with the commercial realtor, the improved value into the building equates to almost $100,000 a year in improved, in higher rent. So no, we're not collecting that because this is our partner that's occupying the space. But that shows the value that was created by the additional money that was spent. Now, nothing changes. The council didn't approve that funding and we're being given the bill afterwards. That's not, that's not the right, right way to do things. But the improvements are having a direct benefit to our building with the benefit of the million dollars of support that was put in by the private sector partners. So for them to ask for $300,000 of that back, I think is a pretty reasonable saw off. The second big picture reason why I'm going to support it, and the first one being that this is not money that has just gone into the cost of the contract. It's improved our asset. The second reason is this, we're going to need all the business resources we have in this community to recover from COVID. This is one of the most effective business resources in our community. And yes, we support it and that support has a real cost. But you look at the kind of effort that's being made by all three levels of government of different political stripes right now to try and create resources to support recovery. And I believe this is absolutely essential. I believe the organization will face challenges post-COVID. But one of the things, you know, we can't support individual businesses directly. But what we can do is support the infrastructure that helps them succeed. And there's just no question to me that looking at what the Sandbox does, they help businesses to succeed. And we're going to need that resource. We need it now. We're going to need it even more after the second round of COVID or the second wave. So I am going to support this. I don't like that we've ended up here. I do believe there's tremendous value, both to our taxpayers in terms of what's been put into the building and a considerably greater amount from outside sources than what we will contribute. And secondly, I believe that the mission in the Sandbox and the work that they do will pay dividends, if you will, many times over in the years to come, if they are as successful as they have been in year one. So I'll call a question on the amendment. Oops, sorry councillor Thompson, yes.
Sorry, Mayor Lehman. Maybe just a friendly to the amendment before we vote or an amendment of the amendment that council direct Ms. Schlichtler and the board of the Sandbox to seek funding from surrounding municipal governments with all repayments back to our community reserve if successful. Would you take that as a friendly?
I would, yes.
Okay, members of council, are you clear about the amendment? There's been an additional paragraph added directing the board to pursue additional funding from neighboring municipalities and those funds to repay the community benefit reserve contribution. Councillor Harvey?
Thank your worship. I do appreciate the flavor of this amendment to the amendment. I guess my concern is approving the money tonight opposed to doing our due diligence and allowing them to do their due diligence by possibly referring this back to Finance and Corporate Services Committee, which would then buy the Sandbox some time to approach the bordering municipalities and the county and then report back. So then we can actually make a fully informed decision opposed to approving this $300,000 tonight potentially. And then hopefully our bordering communities will decide to step up and be a part of this. What's the incentive for our bordering communities and the county to step up when they've already got the cash in hand? So I'm a little reluctant to support this amendment and would be more supportive of the initial direction that I spoke of with deferring this back to Finance and Corporate Services for future consideration.
Okay, thanks councillor Harvey. So you could put a referral motion on if the current amendment does not pass. Councillor McCann on the amendment?
Just real quickly councillor Harvey, that, you know, they have been pursuing neighboring communities for the past year with no success, right? So I definitely appreciate the amendment from councillor Thompson, but they have already, that wheel has already been spun and they have received nothing. So I just want to muddy the waters. I mean, I think that they've done their due diligence and that they've done their work.
Okay, folks, the amendment, as adjusted, I guess, it was a friendly amendment. So to include the request to the board is on the floor. Are there any further comments or questions? I would like to bring this to a vote, given the other two matters on the agenda. Okay, seeing none on the amendment. All those in favor, please indicate. And opposed councillor Ripma and councillor Harvey and councillor Erin, okay, the amendment passes on the main motion as amended. Any further comments on the Sandbox? Okay, seeing none. I will call the question on the motion as amended. Those in favor of the motion as amended, please indicate. And opposed? Three, it carries. Okay, thank you, members of general committee. Separate report's been requested. That'll go on separately as well. The land disposition matter is an in-camera matter. We'll do that following the remaining public matter, which is the parking strategy, which I imagine might not be a short item, but let's see what we can do, council. Deputy Mayor Ward, you held the item. Would you care to put it on the floor and start us off?
I will put the item on the floor and pray nobody asks it to be read out loud. And I'll speak to it as well.
No, but you got to read it next week at council and then I have to repeat it.
Okay, I'm, if I could speak to this, I'll say, first of all, I think it's a great report. I think it's very thorough. It's probably maybe the most realistic parking strategy I've seen in my many years here. And I just like it. It gives us a path to follow. And I think if we follow this path, our parking situation will be much improved. I mentioned how I've seen many reports. I think every single term I've served, we've dealt with a parking issue at least once. And in fact, we've been blessed to deal with it twice in this term, that the summer parking, the waterfront parking and now this. And I got bad news for it. I'm going to put on amendment, which means we're going to have at least a third discussion during this term. But I think it's a worthwhile amendment and that amendment would be that the, we remove paragraph 3M, which just to remind people is the one about the evening parking. So 3M and refer it back to staff for a full report in the third quarter of 2021. And I'll speak to that.
Okay, so the amendment would be to refer the matter of whether or not, or the evening parking, the proposed evening parking charge back to staff the third quarter of 2021, Deputy Mayor Ward, that's what you said. Okay, so that's, yeah, and that's important because as it says in the motion, it is not proposed to begin until April of 2022. So that presumably might not affect the timeline of implementing it, just the decision wouldn't be made tonight. It would be referred back to staff. Okay, so go ahead, Deputy Mayor Ward.
There's a few reasons for this. One is that, I mean, that the downtown businesses are coming through a really tough time and especially the restaurants, maybe they've had their Main Street dug up for the past several months. COVID is still here and I don't want to put this amendment on, I don't want to have the original motion on to we know what's happening with COVID. I hope it's gone in a year sometime. We have no way of knowing that. We could have be another year of the same kind of restrictions we have now. We may even have tighter restrictions. I don't want to have this hanging over restaurants thinking that, oh, I'm struggling. I know in a year, in a year and a half, we're going to be bringing in parking fees. Let's look at it what it's like in a year's time. Hopefully, we'll have COVID behind us. We can actually look at it more clearly. Another reason is that it'll also give us a better chance to see where we are in the revenue from the other sources. In a year's time, if especially if we can have a regular year, especially in the waterfront parking, that kind of thing. We'll get a better idea where we stand in terms of revenue. And the third reason is that I really believe this matter deserves a report all its own. I think it's a little hasty to look at it now. I'm not opposed to extending the parking evening, but I think we have to look at it smartly. And I'm not sure whether nine to nine are the right hours. We might want to do nine to midnight. We might want to look at those hours. I think we can only do that with a separate staff report. I think there's value in maybe looking at a different way of having people pay for parking in the evening, not just plugging meters or paying by the hour. I mean, people are coming down in the evening for a different purpose. They're going to the Five Points Theater, they're going out for supper. And I know, first of all, no other comparable municipality charges at night, but the ones that do charge for special events at night, charge a flat fee. In other words, if you're going to Kingston, going to the hockey game downtown, they charge you a flat fee of $3 or something. And I would really like staff to look at a flat fee, for example, after 5 o'clock or after 6 o'clock, where somebody coming down for the evening. Hopefully in a year's time, we'll have the technology in place, we'll know what's there. And people coming down in the evening for at least the off-street lots can pay $2 for the rest of the evening. They don't have to sit there and think, oh, my God, I got to finish my meal. I got to get back and put more money in the meter or whatever. I really think we have a month staff to look at different ways of charging for parking. If we're going to charge, let's have a flat fee perhaps in the evening where we get just as much revenue, but people wouldn't be stuck worrying about that. I think if people came down in the evening, thought, yeah, you know, I'm going to pay another $2 to park, at least I get the whole evening there. I can go for supper and then go for a drink after. I don't want them coming down in the evening to say, oh, oh, man, how much time am I going to give you for an hour? Are we going to be a two hours and I've got to rush back to my car? I just think there's a lot more opportunities and I want a full staff report on what are the options for including, for extending evening parking, including the hours. And so that's my proposal for the evening. I guess you could use a lot of the same arguments to say why we're, why we're still going ahead with the rate increase during the day. I think it is different. It's incremental. People are used to paying during the day. And they largely won't notice the pain another 25 cents, because you're not paying, you're putting the money in for how much time you're going to be down. I don't think it'll be as noticeable. I have concerns about the hospital fee, but I'll leave that for others. Right now, the only amendment is that we look at this whole matter in another year with a separate staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ward. Okay, so the amendment on the floor is to refer the evening parking matter back to staff. And we'll see that again in a year's time. Councillor McCann?
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I just want to know if Deputy Mayor Ward would have a friendly or if I have a separate amendment. I too agree with pretty much everything that councillor Ward said. The hospital one, I'm still processing that. But I've got a different opinion when it comes to daytime usage. Right now, we're charging $1.25. They want to increase it to $1.50. I believe that that's going to be an increased revenue of a quarter of $1 million. If we take nighttime evening parking out, I believe that's a deficit of half a million dollars. I strongly believe that no one's going to care if it's $1.50 or if it's $2. The BIA will be all over it, for sure they will. But I think that I would like to see staff investigate increasing the rate to $2 and that extra 75 cents per hour would give revenue back to Berry, I believe, of three quarters of $1 million, which would get us, which would neutralize the nighttime deficit and increase our income by a quarter million dollars. And obviously, the timeline, because of COVID, nothing would happen until 2022.
Sorry, was that just for the daytime meeting you're asking a friendly, just for the raising the daytime rates that? I prefer it a separate motion. I think it's going to complicate this. We'll just talk about the evening rates right now.
Okay, any other comments on Deputy Mayor Ward's amendment to send back the evening parking matter to staff? Okay, if none, I'll call the question on that amendment. All those in favor of that amendment? Okay, if none, I'll call the question on that amendment. All those in favor of that amendment, please indicate. Thought it might be that passes. Deputy Mayor Ward, you still have the floor. Do you have any further amendments or comments?
No, I'll see if anybody else wants to put another one on, not right now.
All right, Counselor Kungal, then Counselor McCann.
Your worship, I would like to propose consideration for removing that's still under three H. Three H states. Increase the early payment fine from 20 to $50 for paid parking infractions in the hospital area.
Okay.
That further.
So I'm sorry, just to repeat your, what would you do with paragraph H?
I would like to remove H.
Remove it. Okay, so the amendment would be to delete paragraph three H. Go ahead, Counselor Kungal.
And that's just because, and I did have the great benefit of connecting with staff in the pre consultations on the strategy and do echo the compliment. I did really personally struggle with increasing the parking rate. I'm fine with that, but I did want to focus in on the area with the hospital, seeing that we're looking at more than doubling the current, but still being under the hourly fee that the hospital has. But we're also seeing H identifying that an early payment fine from 20 to $50. In addition, we're also seeing in G above that extending the parking fee in the hospital area or extending paid parking from Monday to Friday to now Monday to Sunday. So I'm seeing kind of three revenue generating opportunities. I would like to consider that we remove H, because I think it will be a bit of time before maybe people realize that change. And I don't want to see this negative impact around really steep fees for parking infractions. At this time, I'd like to see it removed. I believe the presentation identified that the increase would be going up in January, so Q1 of 2021. Perhaps this could be retabled at a future state, but I thought I thought it'd be nice if we didn't actually increase both the change in rates, a duration, and the early payment fine.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Kungal. On Counselor Kungal's amendment. Any comments? Counselor Owen?
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Just a quick question for staff on that. So we're only looking here to to get rid of the early, increasing the early payment fine. Do we see any concerns with people not actually paying for parking because the differential between the actual parking fee and the fine might not be enough?
Mr. Forsythe or Ms. Williams, if you're on?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Lehman. And through you to Counselor Ailin. The answer is yes, that is basically why we decided to increase the fines as well, because we are going to a larger hourly rate, which would encourage compliance if the fine was higher.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a hard time with this amendment. If we're making changes in a fashion like this, it's not really the way to do an overarching strategy and encourage the type of parking behavior we're looking for. So at this time, I don't think I'm supportive of the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on the amendment? Counselor Thompson, then Deputy Mayor.
Through you, Mayor Liam. I will not be supporting the amendment. I just think people need to be accountable. I was, I am discomfort, I have some discomfort with the rate we're charging around the hospital 100%. But whatever the rate is, if you don't pay and there's a fine, I don't think we should reduce it. So I will not be supporting this, but I I understand, you know, the thoughts around it. Like I said, I had some issues with the actual amount, but that can be maybe done at a later date.
Thanks, Counselor Thompson. Deputy Mayor Ward?
Yeah, I kind of get what you're trying to do, Counselor Kungal. I kind of agree that maybe the first three months, maybe delay the increased fine for three months or so. The problem is, somebody's going to be parked there on a Saturday, not realizing that you have to pay on a Saturday because they've probably been going to the hospital for a year. And that first Saturday, they're going to get a $50 ticket. And that's, that bothers me. I'm wondering whether we could delay the introduction of the raising the yearly payment fee from 20 to 50 for three months or so. Just get people a chance to use to work inside. They're still going to pay $20. But I think some people are going to get caught, not even realizing they have to pay on a Saturday or a Sunday, especially a Sunday. They're going to get that ticket. We're going to get the calls. And I kind of sympathize with them. I think that's a huge fine, $50. Somebody's going to be paying because they didn't realize that they're paying on Sundays. Maybe. So I wonder if there's any way, Counselor Kung, you can say for the first three months or some period of time, give people a chance to get used to the fact that we're now charging for Saturdays and Sundays. I can remember, I've been on council long enough, I remember we started, we, one time we charged for Saturday parking. We never did it. We started charging for Saturday parking. We handed out hundreds of tickets the first weekend. And you should have heard the complaints from people because they hadn't realized they had to start paying on Saturday. And I just, I can see this happening here. $20 is going to be bad enough. $50 is a lot of money because you didn't realize you had to put money in the meter on a Saturday. Or a Sunday. So Counselor Kungal?
Through your worship, back to Council Ward. And thank you. I think my intention is at least to remove it for now and put it back in based on staff recommendation, but maybe I'll redirect to Mr. Forsythe. Would you would staff support from an impact to strategy? For me, I'm just wanting to look at a phased approach to these three changes happening within those hospital related parking spots. So would a three-month deferral of increasing the early payment be palatable to staff and the strategy? Or would you have a different recommendation to counsel around the impact a delay could have on 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 communication and and revenue?
Mr. Forsythe?
Through you, Mayor Lehman, to Counselor Kungal. Thanks for the question. And yes, it's definitely something we can do. And and we have changed our practices over the year where when we do implement new rates, whether it was, you know, a finer or rates around, you know, the waterfront and things like that, our enforcement officers for the first little bit of time do use it as an educational opportunity to to advise the infraction. But you know, if it was the decision of council for three months, then I'm looking at Clerk Wendy Cook, she may have something to say, but we could definitely do a period of time, but I'll, maybe I'll pass it over to enforcement services.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Brent. Through you, Mayor Lehman, to Counselor Kungal or members of council. We would have to delay our application for the set fine for this area. So in order for us not to apply, in order for us not to apply the increased $50 fine, we would just delay applying for that set fine so that it wouldn't come into place until April 1st, for for lack of a better date.
So could I, may I then take a stab at changing my request to amend the motion as amended? That H is amended to read to increase the early payment fine from 20 to $50 for paid parking infractions in the hospital area as of April 1st, 2021?
Okay, is that clear to members of council? So it would be three months later, the increase in the early payment fine. Okay, Counselor Thompson, then Counselor Natalie Harris on the amendments.
Through you, Mayor Lehman, to staff. Within the three months that we're delaying it, if somebody received a $20 ticket, would it be accompanied by a piece of paper explaining that the fine is on its way up? Or would that be used at the educational at that point?
Ms. Cook, I think that one's for you.
Through you, Mayor Lehman, to Counselor Thompson. We would actually probably do that through media release as opposed to or through the media and not through ourselves, because it would just be a more widespread message that way.
Then if that was the case, wouldn't it just be, if we, if this passes without the amendment, wouldn't we start the media coverage of start it now, which gives almost three months of education with signage like that we could put out saying as of January?
Through you, Mayor Lehman, to Counselor Thompson. Yes, we would start the media now. If it was going to be effective January 1st.
So it's six and a half, half a dozen each. We do it now for three months or we do it in January. I just think that there was so much time by staff spent on this with projected numbers. And like I said, I just, I think that we've got to, you know, in a lack of a better terms, not talking about a hospital, but pull the Band-Aid off quick.
Thanks, Counselor Thompson. Next, I have Counselor Natalie Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Yeah, I'm, I agree with Counselor Thompson. That's a great suggestion, I think. But my one question to staff was will, like, the signage will be clear, like, it will say, you know, there's parking, you have to pay on Saturday and Sunday. I mean, I don't know, just kind of about accountability with this. And this has been, it's a pretty in-depth report as well. And I trust that that was the best recommendation. And and I think that's a perfect solution, Counselor Thompson, that we're going to put that out. And we can all share it on our social media as well. Let the word out. You know, make sure you're paying on the weekends. And that's the new thing. We have you know, this is, we have a lot of deficit that we need to consider. So I'm I'm for what Counselor Thompson said for sure. And so, yeah, just about the signage, I'm guessing it'll be a clear signage that you need to pay on the weekend now.
Ms. James Reed, you no doubt are hearing the comments from members of council concerned that it's it's well communicated, these changes. Maybe you could outline some of what we would do to communicate the changes.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman, to Counselor Harris. We certainly would use all of our tools in our communications toolbox to communicate this, including some of the temporary signage that we did over the summer. So I've certainly heard the discussion and we'll work with our friends in enforcement as well to do some promotional things on the cars as well. Perfect. That's what I, that's what I figured. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the amendment? The amendment that's currently on the floor is to push by three months, the implementation of the rise in the early payment fine for the hospital area on-street parking. Counselor Kungal?
I'm taking the temperament of the comment to date. I'm happy to withdraw the amendment, but I will look to staff to be engaging RVH and other stakeholders around making sure there's really great communication that can get into the hands of individuals that might be regular individuals in and out of the hospital. And and I'll look to staff to identify if there's any projected concerns, or if there could even be a consideration of a grace period around giving warnings for the first week or two, if we're seeing a lot of individuals that have not successfully received communications, hearing that even with COVID, repetition is the the key to learning. But but sometimes I would say that unless you are familiar with where to find information on media releases and such, that perhaps we could have greater discretion around this particular area before we find to do a period of warnings. So I'll remove the amendment.
Okay, thanks for that, Counselor Kungal. The amendment's withdrawn. Moving on, additional amendments. I had Counselor McCann next.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I also wanted staff to look at increasing the downtown parking to $2 an hour and make that feasible for Q1 of 2022.
Sorry, so you have an amendment, Counselor McCann?
Yes. So I would like, I'd like staff to look at increasing the fines, the parking from $1.25 to $2. And report back to us with Counselor, sorry, Deputy Mayor Ward's report.
Okay, so, sorry, you're adding a new paragraph to ask staff to, so in in six I, paragraph six I of the motion, we're directing that in 2021 in October, the hourly on-street rates, well, actually, all the hourly rates and the daily rates go up. But you, are you changing that? Or are you asking staff to look at actually a higher amount when they report back on Counselor Ward's or in the report that Counselor Ward's amendment has directed?
Correct. I'd like to the increase to $2 an hour.
Okay, so you want to change the rate that's in the motion?
150.
Just for the hourly on on-street. Sorry, can you give your amendment in terms of what you want to do with the motion, please, Counselor McCann?
Yeah, no, sorry, I don't have it in front of me, Mayor Lehman. So so six I, so I'm looking, what I'm looking to do is the on-street parking, that's $1.25 now, staff have recommended that it go to a $1.50. I'm requesting that staff investigate to go to $2 because of the lost revenue. If we, if Mayor, Deputy Mayor Ward's amendment or motion passes, we're going to lose, I believe, a half million dollars, and this will recover the half million dollars.
So no, I think there's some confusion here. So Deputy Mayor Ward's amendment moved the decision on whether or not we're going to do evening parking to next year. That wasn't going to come into effect until 2022 anyway. So we could decide in a year to do evening parking, and there won't be any impact on the financial strategy that staff have laid out. If we decide a year from now not to do it, then there certainly would be an impact. And at that point, we would either need to do something else to replace the lost revenue or accept that, you know, we're going to have greater deficits than than the strategy lays out. So just just to be clear, if you were tying it to Deputy Mayor Ward's amendment, his amendment passed. And that amendment means that we won't be putting evening rates in, we won't be deciding tonight on whether or not to have paid evening parking. We'll be deciding on that a year from now. But the the impact on the strategy is zero until that decision is is made. In the sense that that wasn't going to go into effect till 2022. So I guess, Counselor McCann, if what you want to do is change the strategy so that the on-street parking rate goes up to $2 instead of 150 next October, you need to amend paragraph six I. If you want staff to look at that and report back, you need to move an amendment that that does that.
So I want to move an amendment that staff, when they're investigating six I, that they also look at increasing the rate from $1.25 that is now. They wanted an increase of $1.50 to make that a tuning and to implement that in Q1 of 2022. So I'm following along with the deputy mayor's ask and was asking them when their report comes back that they investigate the financial implications to raising the the fee to $2.
So you just want the report on that. You don't want to direct them to actually do that.
Correct.
So I think you would be then adding a new paragraph that says when staff, the clerk is nodding. Okay, so we'll have a new paragraph 12. That would be that staff report back on raising. And I'm sorry, Counselor McCann, is it just the hourly on-street that you're interested in increasing?
Correct.
To $2 an hour instead of 150? Or up from 150? Would you care to speak to that?
Sure. You know, I I believe that you know, that nobody is going to resist coming to our downtown because of a 50% increase from $1.50 to $2. And I believe that the the revenue that the city of Barry will acquire, I, nothing's in stone here, but I believe for every 25 cents increase, it's going to be a quarter million dollars in revenue. That'll be an extra $500,000 in revenue that'll go towards directly paying down our debt. And if Barry Ward succeeds, which I'd be fully supportive with his amendment to take out evening parking, I believe that this is just good business. And I believe that it's not going to affect the downtown in a negative way.
Okay, thanks, Counselor McCann. The amendment is to add a paragraph 12 to look at going to hourly on-street of $2 in 2022. Deputy Mayor Ward, go ahead.
Yeah, just for clarification, my amendment didn't say that we were going to eliminate evening parking. It was going to look at it in a year's time. I just thought we'd be in a better position to look at it in a year's time. And certainly part of that report could be, if we didn't do it, what adding a $2 an hour on the street parking would mean in revenue. But I just want to make it clear, my motion did not call for elimination or for, did not have evening parking. My apologies.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Ward. Anyone wish to speak to this? Counselor Jim Harris?
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. In record election of Ms. Williams' report, she did make the comment that the method of payment is more often a bigger issue than the cost of the payment. So I understand the BIA had a part in this investigation and the current rate decision. So I, so I'm not opposed to the, having a report on the tuney. So my question, three, Mayor Lehman, to staff would be, is the downtown going to be the priority area for the new machines and the new app-based technology, which would make parking more convenient to be able to pay downtown? Is that part of the point? If I missed that, I apologize.
Ms. James Reed, I know you were looking to speak, I think, previously to, go ahead.
Thank you, through your, Mayor Lehman, to Counselor Jim Harris. Yes, the, the intent of the investments into our technology would be focused in our downtown area and our waterfront as well. So hopefully that would address that. What I was hoping to just clarify is that the, the recommendation in 6I, which speaks to the on-street and off-street parking increases, is a different timing than the proposal that we had put forward for the evening parking. So the, the amendment by Counselor Deputy Mayor Ward to report back in the, in, in next year at this time works fine from our timing, but it, the proposal from Counselor McCann is problematic because we wouldn't be reporting back until after 6I was already implemented. Because 6I is recommending that these pay, or these fare increases increase October 4th of 2021. So if there is a desire to have us report back on the increased hourly rate to $2, I would propose that we would need to report back sooner than October 4th. Or you may wish to pause on 6I because otherwise we have an issue that we would have direction to increase the fee and to report back on the $2 per hour.
Just to clarify, though, Counselor or Deputy Mayor Ward's amendment, I think, said third quarter of 2021. Was that correct, Counselor Ward? So that's July, August, September. I recognize that's very close to the implementation date and staff probably needs some lead time. And there's also only one meeting in August typically of city council. So I can see why that timing is awkward, Ms. James Reed. Counselor McCann, I guess we could ask for a separate report sooner if you would wish as part of your amendment.
Sure.
Okay, so the amendment will now be that staff report back on the potential to increase the hourly on-street rates in the downtown to $2 an hour. On that, others wish to speak? If none, I'm going to oppose this for three reasons. I could not be more opposed. While I understand the desire to look for a replacement in revenue and maintain a deficit-free parking fund, this is exactly the wrong way to do it and I'm not willing to consider it. The issue already is that daytime businesses have paid parking during their hours of operation and evening businesses do not. And this is simply penalizing further the daytime economy of the downtown, which is what I consistently hear from our residents. They want to promote, they want to see more shops and services that are open during the daytime. Secondly, I think it's, it's going to be extremely confusing because if we're adjusting the on-street rate and not the off-street rates, we're going to have quite a completely different differential in terms of the parking strategy. I mean, you either do them all or you don't. And we're not adjusting the daily total rates. And the other reason, to be frank, is that I don't want to be sending the message right now to businesses on our main street, almost all of whom are independent small businesses that says you're, you're going to get hit with a parking rate increase next fall. And by the way, you should put that into your thinking while you're thinking about the future of your business going through COVID. There's no way council should be even talking about increasing the cost of parking in the downtown next fall by, by nearly twice. And while I understand that the 75 cents probably isn't the issue, I get that. I, I think if you're, you know, you're, if the point of the amendment is the difference between 75 cents and 25 cents is not a lot of money, that's true. But what a message to send to our, our businesses who are, are on the brink right now and have already been through the construction project, are still in the middle of the construction project right now and are now going to be told that council is not only not going to charge in, in, in the evenings for all of those, but all those daytime businesses, you're going to now have to tell your customers that parking is, is council looking at, at raising it even further. So I was struggling with, to be frank, even the, the strategy that's in the report in terms of the, the rate increases that are there. But I accept that a modest increase on a regular basis is far better than holding off and then having to raise more because of the deficit. But I even struggle with passing the, the, the rate increases that are in the report right now. It's the last thing our businesses need to hear. That being said, this is, and this is my third reason to oppose the amendment, are the merchants themselves said if you're going to do something, do evening parking. So I supported Counselor Ward's amendment because he's not saying no, he's not saying yes. He's just saying, let's see how COVID turns out first. And folks, let's see how COVID turns out before we hit our daytime businesses in the downtown with a 70 or 80% increase in the cost of parking. So I will be voting against this amendment. Okay, counselors, there is a reason why the chair is supposed to speak last procedurally, but go ahead. Counselor McCann and then Counselor Natalie Harris.
Good. I do appreciate all that you said, Mayor Lehman, and by no means was I voting for an increase in $2. I was voting for information. And if we do decide to take evening parking out, there is going to be a deficit of a half a million dollars. And I would like to have another tool in our toolbox to let us know how we're going to recover from our debt. So I do appreciate your comments. They were strong and they were heard clearly. But I was not voting that we increase the rate by 75 cents. I was clearly asking for information. Thank you.
Counselor Natalie Harris?
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I didn't mean to go after you as well, but actually that was what I was requesting was clarification as to what we were just about to vote on. So if we can go over one more time, I, and now I'm clear from what Counselor McCann said, but I was confused now. So it's to ask for the report. Am I correct? That's what we're voting on right now?
Yes, Counselor Harrison, and apologies if the strength of my comments made you see otherwise. But the, the amendment is to investigate, just to get the information. My comments are because I don't believe we should even be considering it. So I don't think we should be giving direction to staff to investigate it. Are there any other comments or questions on the amendment? Okay, if not, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the amendment? Opposed, please indicate. Okay, the amendment fails. Further comments or questions or amendments? Counselor Morales?
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I'm looking for an amendment. I'll get the city clerk to help me out with wording just because my phone is dead. But it's regarding the extension of the two-hour free parking for the month of December on Chase McCracken Way. And Ms. Cook, could you just clarify on the wording for me?
Ms. Cook?
Three, Mayor Lehman, the amendment would read that the two-hour free parking in December 2020 be extended to include the Chase McCacken lot.
There we go.
Okay, so the amendment as read by the clerk on the amendment, Counselor Morales?
Downtown businesses need all support they can get, especially during the holiday season. Pretty self-explanatory. If there's any specific questions from counselors, this lot is not, is, is, one of the concerns that people usually have during the Christmas season, when the months get darker, is people don't like parking where it's dark in the parcade. We've talked about that many times. Chase McCracken is, is an open parking lot and it's something that can encourage us, people to come downtown and it doesn't interfere with snow plowing operations. That's basically it.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Morales, on the amendment. Deputy Mayor Ward?
Thank you. I need to go into clarification on exactly which lot. I mean, there are lots on both sides. Chase McCacken, and I want to make sure you referring to both or the one on the south side only? Make clear. There's another one on the north side.
The unpaved one, yeah.
Sorry, the unpaved one?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, that's interesting because I'd interpreted it the other way, that it was the big one we were talking about. So just some clarity here, I think we refer to the one on the north side as the 1-15 Bayfield Lot and the one on the south side is Chase McCacken, but I could be, I could be wrong. Ms. James Reed?
Through your, Mayor Lehman, you are correct. The Chase McCacken lot is actually the paved lot. And that is the one that I understand that the BIA is requesting for this to be free two-hour for the month of December.
Further proof that, uh, things can be confusing with parking. Thank you, Ms. Ginger.
Thanks, Counselor Morales. So the amendment would be to make the, the parking lot on the south side of Chase McCacken free for the month of December, or at least two hours free for the month of December. We all clear on what the amendment is? Anyone else wish to comment? Oh, I would certainly support this one. I think it's a great idea. I'll call the question. Those in favor of the amendment? Anyone opposed? None? That carries. Okay, further amendments to the parking strategy? Any others, the members of general committee wish to move? Okay, seeing none on the main motion as amended several times. Anyone wish to comment on the main motion? Counselor Owen?
Just really quickly, I want to say how excited I am by what's in this parking strategy. We have, you know, a new app that's coming to help convenience within the downtown and on the waterfront. We have a fair, a more fair fee structure for parking, you know, better wayfinding and signage to find parking, a waterfront shuttle pilot project that could help with tourism, better utilization of our existing lots, better management of parking spillover in the neighborhoods around the waterfront and the downtown. And we're addressing some equity issues as well with daytime businesses and nighttime businesses as well, we may be next year. So I just wanted to, again, thank staff for their work on this. And so I'm really thankful for what's in the strategy. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Owen. Counselor Morales?
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I'll be, I'm going to be a little more pessimistic. There was one graph that has stood out, I mean, this presentation, and that's that linear graph where we're in deficit. That reminded me of the same graph that our G, General Manager of Corporate Services at the time showed us. That was also a very negative line. What I'm getting at is I think we will, as we go forward post-COVID, I think council, whether we want to or not, are going to realize that parking is not self-sustainable in the city. It sucks. We want it to be. I want us to wrap every parking spot. Let's, Counselor McCann, let's make it marketable. Let's do something. But at the end of the day, I think it's just unrealistic to expect that parking is sustainable. And I want it to be, but it, it just simply isn't. And as Berry grows more dense, we're going to lose more parking. So right now we have a good amount of parking spots, but maybe not enough demand, not enough reasons to bring people downtown. And as we create reasons to bring people downtown, we might lose a little bit of that public parking if, unless we do very good public parking components as part of those developments. What I'm getting at is that graph doesn't need to be negative if we change our thinking that parking has to be self-sustainable. And that's something that's difficult for us to process. But I think that, you know, when you have a linear graph that has been negative for over a decade or two decades, it's just time to just change the, the way we approach this. So let's, let's see how this parking strategy goes and let's reassess it at that time. How negative?
Thanks, Counselor Morales. Any other comments? I, I just wanted to echo, actually, the, the two of you, for maybe different reasons, I think, gave a shout out to extensive work by staff here. And I, I think it should be recognized, you know, Deputy Mayor Ward started us off on this discussion tonight by saying it's the, the best strategy seen yet. I think that's because it was, the best work was done to analyze it, to, to look at the consultant's recommendations, not all of which were brought forward to council. Staff listened to the public and said, yeah, this makes sense. This doesn't in terms of the consultant's recommendations and, and our customers, what our customers told us. You know, there's also a couple of things that we haven't talked about tonight. And I'm actually, I'll give a shout out to Counselor McCann for his motion earlier in the summer around waterfront parking charges, which later became the subject of a discussion online between myself and the premier. And that was fun, too. But, you know, the reason I bring that up is because, you know, I think a lot of us were a little nervous around that move. But we haven't talked about it at all. It actually turned out fairly well. And I think it was a good move and, and I think going forward, we have yet to have a normal summer. And Deputy Mayor Ward's point is right. I mean, let's all hope that next summer is not in any way impacted by COVID. But, you know, it could be that it's the, that, you know, it, it's the time right after COVID and, and tourism could really flourish. Who knows? The point I'm raising to Counselor Morales's point, I think, as well is, you know, parking has never managed to become a break even, although I asked Mr. Forsyth for the last three years of financials because it came awfully close a couple of years. And, and I, I would argue that with the increase in waterfront rates and with what is being suggested here tonight, not so bad for us to hold off on some of the other pieces and see where it plays out and do these things a little more incrementally. And I think Deputy Mayor Ward is right. The issue around downtown parking, evening, daytime, otherwise probably is, is good to be subject of a separate report after COVID. I think that was a smart decision. Everything else in here, I think, represents pretty good work. Not all of it am I entirely not nervous about. But I think there's some very, very good work that's been done by staff and I, I wouldn't want to lose. I also wanted to give a shout out to Counselor Jim Harris, who's really been working on, along with Counselor McCann, the issue of the waterfront spillover. I think the work that was done over the summer in response to the problems with COVID is now being incorporated into the strategy and that will benefit the residents in, in wards eight and 10 and one in, and two, where our residents have to put up with that on those peak days in the summer. So I, I think the, the last thing I wanted to say is there's a lot of technology in the strategy. And I think it was Counselor Morales that mentioned that previously. It, it is really one of the strengths of this when I saw the presentation for the first time and again tonight. And I want to compliment Ms. Williams on an excellent presentation. Again, I, I think this, you know, the introduction of a parking app, digital passes, license plate technology, we're finally sort of getting with the times. And there's a lot in this. I think, you know, we're going to see where it goes in the first year or so before we make the other moves that might impact perhaps the situation in the downtown, and I think that's a good decision. So with that, on the main motion as amended three times, I will call the question. Those in favor of the motion as amended? Any opposed? None? That carries unanimously. Thanks, General Committee. That was good work on that item, I think. The remaining item is in camera. So I will now move to inquiries of staff. Deputy Mayor Ward, do you have any inquiries of staff?
I have none.
Members of general committee, any inquiries of staff? Okay, I had one. And I guess it would be to Mr. Prowse. Mr. Prowse, we've recently received some correspondence from downtown restaurants wishing to extend the patio season now. This issue was already brought to staff and staff were able to extend the patio season by a week. However, the request has come in to see if some of those patios could remain through November on the chance that we get some good weather, and that's certainly something that's been done to allow people to continue to dine safely in other parts of the province. Would staff be considering this? There isn't the opportunity for council to give direction on that correspondence, which just came in on Thursday or Friday. But is there, are staff able to consider this? Mr. Prowse or Ms. Cook?
Mr. Prowse?
I see Ms. Cook has her camera on. Maybe I'll let her answer first, Mayor Lehman.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Prowse. Through you, to you, Mayor Lehman. There is a course, we put the correspondence from the, one of the businesses concerning the extension of the patio season on the circulation list tonight. In conversations with another member of council today, they were going to refer that piece of correspondence to staff to review the possible extension of the patio season.
Oh, I'm sorry, it did get on the circ list for tonight. Okay, my apologies. So that's coming under circ list and list. And I know that the ward counselor was interested in this, too. Sorry, we didn't close the loop before the meeting. So it is on, and I will just shut up and we can do deal with that in a minute. Any other inquiries of staff, members of General Committee? Nope. Okay, announcements, Deputy Mayor Ward? Nope, any other announcements, members of General Committee? Counselor Harvey, Owen, and then McCann. Counselor Harvey?
I'll make this announcement this week, and then I'll let Counselor Harris do the same announcement next week. Just to let residents know that we have an upcoming joint Ward six and seven Town Hall with both counselors, along with Mayor Lehman, and also members of the Berry Police Service, as obviously a lot of our concerns that we get from residents are are traffic related. So that'll be on Thursday, October 29. It'll be on Zoom and it starts at 7:00 PM and goes till about 9 o'clock. Watch the city website and our websites for links to be able to register so you can log in.
Thank you very much. I have Counselor Owen next.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. A couple of different announcements here. So the first couple are on new developments proposed for Ward two. So tomorrow evening at Planning Committee at 7:00 PM, there are two public meetings for two proposed developments at the corner of Sophia and Bayfield. And you can check out the details by going to my website, keenan.ca, and there's a link for the neighborhood meetings and public meetings for new developments. And then also, this later this week on the 22nd, which is Thursday, there is a neighborhood meeting for another proposed development at 217 Dunlop Street East. So again, it's a neighborhood meeting, October 22nd, Thursday at 5:00 PM. And you can also go to keenan.ca to find the information for that. And then my final announcement is just a kudos and a thank you to Kelly McKenna, the Managing Director at the BIA and the downtown BIA staff for their excellent work on open air Dunlop and Autumn in the city. They had their last Saturday with Dunlop Street, a portion of Dunlop Street closed for pedestrian and cyclist traffic to enjoy. And it was a smashing success. They really lucked out with the weather. And it was so great to see so many people enjoying our downtown safely and hoping that we can use as an opportunity to imagine what our streets can be like when they're designed for people and not just cars. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Owen. Counselor McCann?
Thank you, Mary Lehman. That was beautiful, Counselor Owen. I just want to do a shout out to City Berry that it was a privilege of being associated with the Rotary Club of Berry. The Rotary Club of Berry is putting on a Halloween competition for the youngsters and for for the households, three prizes, best house that decorated, best front door and best pumpkin. And it's a great way that we can get out and get our get our gruel on. Anyway, so you can see it through the City of Berry, they're promoting it. You see it at facebook.com/BarryRotary. And hopefully you you get into the you get into the festive. Sorry, it's 9:00 to 10 o'clock. I'm done.
Thanks, Counselor McCann. Any other announcements? Okay, I do have the usual raft. I would like to proclaim the month of October, sorry, the week of October 19th to October 25th is Waste Reduction Week. The day October 22nd is Childcare Worker and Early Childhood Educator Appreciation Day. And October 24th is World Polio Day in the City of Berry. This is also Small Business Week across Ontario. And tomorrow, we have the Accelerate Summit kicking up online, tremendous program of events in partnership with Georgian College that are planned over the next four days. And of course, Small Business Week is the opportunity for us to recognize the vital role that entrepreneurs, job creators, and small businesses play in Ontario. It's also Local Government Week, intended to highlight the key role that we, Ontario's municipal governments, play in helping to define the character priorities and physical makeup of Ontario's diverse communities. There is a campaign in association with the Ministry of Municipal Fairs, AMO, and AMCTO to highlight some of the work that local governments do and how we've come together to address COVID-19 in our communities across Canada. Due to that COVID-19 pandemic, of course, we have unfortunately had to cancel one of the best new ideas of the last few years, the ghost bus, which used to make an appearance at locations around Berry. And unfortunately, we couldn't do that this year for Halloween. We will be selling Halloween in a Bag packages that residents can purchase for $5, containing bags full of Halloween fun activities and crafts that can be enjoyed in the comfort of your home. Packages are available for purchase online at play. berry.ca/halloweeninabag. And you can also call Service Berry 726-4242. A reminder that our new OP and urban design guidelines are online at buildingberry.ca for your review and comment. Counselor Owen rightly already highlighted Culture Days programming and some of the programming that occurred in the downtown. And of course, there were a variety of initiatives throughout the community, including the arts and culture community, being able to display in the Artists and Biz Program, the downtown window decorating, and a number of public art projects as well as part of Culture Days. And that runs through October 25th this weekend. I think everybody has already heard many times the the advice around gathering and distancing, a reminder that right now we do remain in Phase Three, which is 10 people at an indoor event, 25 people at an outdoor event. But the Health Unit guidance is to shrink your close contacts as much as possible. And obviously, folks, screen your kids every day for symptoms of COVID before they leave for school. There is and continue to trust trusted sources of information as we continue to try and get good information to people from trusted sources about how to deal with the pandemic. And that is the Health Unit's website and the Government of Ontario and the Government of Canada. City Hall, last note, is open to the public, of course, as well, but with limited services. And you can find out about our services available at City Hall here at on the website or email service dot berry@berry.ca. Okay, circulation lists. I stole Counselor Owen's thunder before Counselor Owen. Well, we'll do the the two circulation lists from before Thanksgiving first. So October 5th, any members of committee? Any items from October 5th? No. October 8th? Okay, October 19th. Go ahead, Counselor Owen.
Thank you, Mary Lehman. Still my thunder. Anytime if it's going to help people in the city, that's fine. I'm over it. So we have correspondence from the Flying Monkeys crap brewery, and it was forwarded to us by the downtown BIA. So I would like to move that the correspondence from Flying Monkeys regarding an extension of patio season be referred to staff to review the feasibility of this and report back.